Three, two, one.
Welcome everyone to our January seventeenth Select Board meeting. I will start with my script. This is Select Board Chair Josh Levine. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated in the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Mark Gold.
Yes.
Here.
Dan Zwerko.
Yes.
Tom McCusick.
Here.
Steph, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted in person with a remote option available to the public, consisting of Chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one. This meeting is convened in person via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda in town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please fill out the public comment form given upon arrival to the meeting. I will call in residents in the order in which the forms are received. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, members of the public are attendees. If a member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please use raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. Meeting moderator will promote you to panelist, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual has four to three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. All right, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll start with our announcements. Preliminary town, special town election. The voter registration deadline to vote in the preliminary special town election is Saturday, January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. The preliminary special town election will be held on Tuesday, February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, at the Long Meadow Community House. Polls open at seven AM and close at eight PM. For more information on the special election calendar and other important dates, please visit longmeadowma.gov/elections. Smoke testing of sanitary sewers. The town of Long Meadow, along with its engineering consultant, DPC Engineering LLC, will be performing smoke testing as part of an ongoing sewer asset management planning project. The smoke testing is planned to start the week of January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Smoke testing involves blowing non-toxic smoke into sanitary sewer mains to determine any areas where storm and surface water may be entering the sewer system. For additional information about the testing and to learn more about the stormwater asset management program, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. All right, and to start today, we have a presentation on AEDs by Chief Dearborn. Hi, Chief.
Good evening, everybody.
Nice to see you.
I brought props. I mean, it's on a line, you think it's a little. So, thank you, I'll try to keep this brief for you. In light of the recent events with the NFL player who suffered a sudden cardiac arrest, I received inquiries from members of the board and the public regarding the availability of AEDs or automatic external defibrillators in our community. After discussing this with the town manager, she asked me to provide a brief report to the board. To start, the key success in regards to this NFL player and anyone who suffers sudden cardiac arrest is rapid initiation of CPR followed by rapid defibrillation. In fact, we've had four instances of lives saved in town this year, and in all cases, rapid initiation of CPR by bystander and the application of either police or fire AED within a few minutes made the difference. In two thousand and ten, the town started investing in public access AEDs. At that time, we equipped all of our town buildings and school buildings with AEDs. We also equipped all of our police cruisers and non-EMS fire vehicles. Since then, we have equipped all of our pools, added additional units to schools and camps. In two thousand and eighteen, we worked with the schools and added multiple units to support the athletic teams and added three units at our busiest planning fields. Currently, the town and the schools combined have sixty-one AEDs. We have also worked with several of our private stakeholders and AEDs are available at many of our larger private facilities in town. We experimented placing three AEDs in outdoor locations four years ago. These are seasonal and removed during the winter. This has not been greatly successful. We've had issues with batteries and in one case, the cabinet leaked ruining the defibrillator. The cabinets are also easily vandalized and in one case, we had a cabinet open and exposed to the weather. We are currently looking to improve this capability, enhance reliability. Annually, the schools combined, the town and the schools combined, spend approximately fifteen thousand dollars per year to maintain this current capability. In FY twenty-five, you will see a CAF request to replace roughly half the units where the original units were approximately seventy-five thousand dollars. I've been asked about gaps in our capabilities. First and foremost is training. Folks need to learn CPR. The new hands-only version is very simple, can almost be taught by watching a video. The second is having people aware of the location of AEDs and have a familiarity on how to use one. I think we could add a couple at the snack bars at our fields. I am reluctant to add any additional outdoor cabinets. I'm worried about these units not being reliable through their storage. I would prefer to look at better storage options, however, this would come at a greater cost. The keys to success in sudden cardiac arrest. Call nine-one-one. In Long Meadow, our dispatcher will talk you through the evaluation steps up to and including CPR. This will also get several AEDs moving toward your location. To be exact, should get three to five AEDs moving towards your location. If you are close to a public access AED, tell someone to go get it, start CPR if indicated and continue until relieved by first responders or the AED has been placed and shock supplied, follow the prompts by the AED. So, just wanted to give you a quick rough rundown. I did have a few residents contact me, say we needed to do more. I guess I'm not really sure what that more is. We've made healthy investment, we're spending a lot of money now. I think there's a, I would love to provide more training to the community. Prior to COVID, we offered some Saturday sessions for the hands-only CPR and AEDs and they were very poorly attended, so we kind of backed off. I was, obviously, I pay my people to provide these classes. So, to pay somebody four hours of pay to have three residents show up, receive the training. Obviously, after any high-profile event, more attention might be, it might be a time to jump on it. I'm not sure, though. We do train, we just did the cross-country teams in the schools here. That was after a student from another school at an event they were at suffered a sudden cardiac arrest. We felt that was a gap. We did make some changes to the way an AED is deployed for the cross-country, it's actually on a golf course when they run out there. We did better familiarization of Turner Park or the cross-country course with our folks. So, I mean, we continue to react when you see these problems come up. But certainly, if the board has concerns about the capability, I believe the school committee is going to be discussing this also, so.
Have you been in touch with Timmy Strong, Timmy Allen? I know they do a lot of AED training.
Not for a minute.
Okay, he's a principal in East Long Meadow.
Yeah.
And he had a heart attack two years ago.
Oh, yeah, 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 I know who you're talking about.
Yeah, and so, he has a, has a group that, I know they raise a lot of money, they've provided AEDs to places and also do a lot of training. I know that that was a wake-up call for me, he's about my age.
Yeah.
And so, but they have a lot of visibility, so if he'd be willing to, if the group would be willing to work with us, I think that could be very useful. Tom?
So, when I think of our town, you know, the shops is sort of a, pretty much a focal point where a lot of people go. And I, I know the big Y probably has an AED there.
They do.
Is there any other AEDs in that area that you're aware of?
So, during the, during the summer season, there's one at Blinn Courts, there's another one at the football stadium, and there's one at Russell Field. Those are the three outside units that we place.
Okay.
I'm not aware of any in the shops or where we place mall. Field Club, Yacht Club, Crunch Clubs, obviously, our senior housing facilities, I'm missing a few, probably. I'll have, we've worked with them, in some cases, we've actually provided them trained. The yacht club, we provide them training every year, partner partnership with them.
Because I wonder if, like a place like Fleet Feet, that, you know, they're dealing with runners, you know, and, you know, they might have one. I know they do races, I don't know if they.
Yeah, I get checked on, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, well, because I think it would be, I don't know if the town should have any influence, but it would be helpful if we could encourage some of the other locations in town. I imagine the CVS probably has one, but we don't know for sure.
I would, I'd be surprised if they did.
You'd be surprised, yeah.
Everybody that has ever approached about it or we've, typically, it's reactionary after they've had an event at their facility. We've worked with them to specify. Initially, we were trying to specify AEDs are compatible with our cardiac monitors, so we'd have to remove the pads and plug new pads in. But that got to be just daunting because we had donated AEDs, so it's not a big deal to just change pads out. And we have adapters, too, so I didn't want to ever limit it, so I changed that policy. My Chief Madison had set that policy and it just got to be unmanageable, so.
All right.
We have different types of pads.
Well, I guess I would use this forum to encourage.
Yeah, absolutely.
People in the, in the shops.
The more we can get out there, the better.
To have, to, you know, if someone could have one and then they could let their neighbors know, because they're all small businesses, but, but they're only like three thousand, four thousand?
Yeah, about twenty-six hundred dollars.
You know, twenty-six hundred dollars, which, it used to be that no one had them because they were too expensive, but since the prices come down, it would be nice to know if you're in one shop, you know, if you're the owner of that shop, that you know, oh, there's an AED next door, someone go get that, I'll call nine-one-one and so forth. Another question is, when a person stops breathing, do you have, this is technical, you may not know, but how, how long is it until their heart stops?
It depends, it's kind of the chicken or the egg question. Sometimes the heart going into a rhythm, so.
Defibrill.
We're not really, hearts don't, if heart stops, the defib's not going to do anything. The heart has to be in a rhythm where it's basically just quivering, all right?
Yeah.
So, we have to have that, that rhythm. The defibrillator, what it does, it actually provides energy, measured in joules, to the cardiac muscle and tells it to stop quivering. And you hope that there's a node on the heart that controls the rhythm, that it starts back in the, in the, in the proper rhythm, depending on how irritated the heart is. That's why it's very important to start CPR right away, because you want to keep that blood flowing, keep that heart muscle oxygenated. So, so the, the heart could stop and they may be breathing, or go into this rhythm, they may breathe for a few seconds or vice versa. It all depends on the sequence, so.
All right, thanks. There's one last thing, I know Mark's ready, but I also would encourage all parents to learn CPR.
Yeah.
There may be a chance where you have to perform it on your own children and you should learn. It's a lot easier than learning how to swim. But I also would encourage parents to have your children learn CPR, because they may need to use it on you.
Yeah, exactly, and, you know, we do teach a fair amount of school-aged people, especially now with the hands-only CPR. I think the mouth-to-mouth used to really scare a lot of people off, or you'd have to have a, you know, pocket mask with you. You know, the science is really out there, at least in the short term, doing hands-only CPR, followed by, you know, an AED showing up or first responder showing up fairly quickly, is going to make the difference. In the four cases we had this year, it was all hands-only CPR and then a police or fire department vehicle arrived with an AED, defibrillated the person, so. One of them, we had actually a pretty high-profile event on Commerce Street, a gentleman out walking his dog. A nurse saw him laying there, stopped, called nine-one-one. The tape is actually really interesting, because the nurse is saying, the dispatcher is telling the nurse how to do CPR and the nurse is like, I've done this a dozen times, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mark.
Chief, one of the things that, you know, you identified is, is training, and so, one of the things that concerns me is a potential gap is our youth sports leagues and volunteer coaches. Have you done anything with the Parks and Rec Department? And is there any way we can work with, through them with the youth sports leagues? I think that's maybe one of our gaps as well. I mean, we have one in normal fields, but I would venture to say that Sunday morning at a soccer field in Glenbrook School, there's probably not an AED there, but.
Yeah.
But, you know, if you're having a day's worth of youth sports somewhere, they might have a league AED with training of the, of the coaches. Is there any, any way of doing, working through that?
So, Barry Jarvis, our park director and I, we communicate on this issue all the time. I mean, we train their, their staff for camps, pools, daycare. And so, one thing is the leagues don't require it, so that's kind of a, so we have all these different, even though they utilize our fields and they rent, they have space from us, we don't necessarily control the leagues or the coaches. I can tell you, when I coached baseball, I was required to have, and I wasn't a great baseball coach. I was kind of like the Dolphins guy we were talking about, so. So, I asked Barry, I said, could we require it? And she said, it's so hard to get coaches right now to put more requirements on the coaches, because they have to be coordinated and everything else. So, one of the things we discussed was, at the beginning of each sport season, so baseball, basketball, football, or three times a year, try to offer for free to the coaches. The hands-only and the AED familiarization, we don't have to buy the cards or the books or things like that, so it's much less cost prohibitive. When we do town employees, we spend about sixty-five dollars every two years per town employee, because we have to buy all the stuff. So, that's something that's within our, I think, within our capability to do, and we're certainly talking about that. As far as the fields, we discussed that a little bit further, whether we could put the, put the defibs in some of the snack bars. Will Swamp Field has one, but it's locked in the snack bar. Whether we could put a coded locks on the doors, but we need to really, you know, there's a security issue there and, but we want to try to figure out a better way to do it. I'm really, Will Swamp, Turner Park, Strobe Field, all worry me, because they're so, so remote and dark, that if I put one of those cabinets out there, there's no lock, they're not locked. They have a little red blinky light that goes on and an alarm that sounds for ten minutes on. Nobody's going to notice, and a three thousand dollar piece of equipment is going to walk away, so. And it just becomes not sustainable at that point. I'm also worried about the cabinets, the fact that if I have an AED in one of these cabinets, it gets wet and it's no good. Somebody opens that door, takes out and to apply it to somebody and the thing doesn't work, you know, where's that stand for liability from the, from the town? So, hopefully, they've done all the right steps, call nine-one-one, the cabinet say right on them, call nine-one-one, so. So, we're still researching, obviously, you know, this is an area that we continue to evolve in, but certainly look for any, any input.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thanks. So, last, it was last week, I had, I reached out to Lynn and Barry and, and then Lynn sent me Mark's email, which was really good in terms of this issue and really detailed with your response, so I appreciate that. In terms of the, the gaps, what about Williams and Glenbrook, the fields themselves? Because I coach predominantly over at Williams and Glenbrook and quite honestly, I don't think I've seen an AED present.
So, they're in the school, they are, and they're actually in the school buildings, but they're, obviously, on a Saturday morning, they're not going to be available. And some of the same concerns, they're, they're remote locations and whether it'd be sustainable to put these outdoor cabinets out there, would they last? I've looked at a couple of different models, my in-laws actually live in the villages in Florida and they have AED teams there. And they have lock, lock cabinets with a key code on it and people that are on this AED team, they'll get a text message, the AEDs needed this address, and the person goes out to their cul-de-sac, presses a button. And again, very controlled atmosphere, but they, they lock, could we do that? And maybe dispatch could transmit that information. So, I've talked to dispatch, they're thinking about it, you know, it's like anything else. Hopefully, the right dispatcher that knows that Long Meadow is doing a different program would do that. I, I'm not sure if that's a viable solution, certainly something we're looking at, to make these things more secure, but buy a much more robust, kind of like an electrical cabinet, I was just looking at those. I mean, they're like four grand, but four grand to put a three thousand dollar item in and hopefully, it's going to last for a few years. So, we're researching some better solutions. It would, and, you know, as an old captain, I used to work for the fire department, it's nothing money can't fix, so.
In terms of Pondside Road as well, so where the, I guess, the transfer station is, is there an AED present down there? And I, and I bring that up, because I was doing some additional research and noticed that the town of Wayland had some gaps down at their transfer station. This is an area where a lot of people are congregating on the weekend and lifting heavy materials, so I just feel like if we have sixty-one of these devices, that perhaps we could put one down in that area?
So, with, with the geographical gaps in town, knowing the relatively small geography of Long Meadow and knowing that I have them deployed on so many vehicles, and I can tell you by evidence that that's worked for us. A police officer is giving me, if, if, in a normal day, a police officer is going to be on scene within two minutes. You're going to have an ambulance or, and if you call and say somebody's in cardiac arrest, you're going to get probably three cruisers that are going to be dispatched to it, a fire truck and an ambulance, and if my inspector's out, they're going to go to it. So, you're going to have five or six AEDs heading in that direction. They're going to be there in one or two minutes in most cases in town, so. Rather than trying to saturate the town with these, these outdoor cabinets that I, I, I would worry about, I feel like that'd get the gap or covered with the mobile AEDs in town. Is it perfect? No, but even the, it's more reliable, because the AEDs are checked every day. You know, they, I think that's a more reliable solution, so. I mean, if people feel strongly about it, I'll certainly push it, I'm just trying to provide the best advice I can.
Sure, I appreciate it.
So, one more point is, I agree, I think that having citizens who can perform CPR until, you know, the ambulance folks show up, I think that's probably the safest thing. But if, if people can just pick up their phone and change the heat in their home, you know, you'd think we'll, we can't be that far away from having a, an AED in a, in a center where if you call nine-one-one and you, and you reach the call center, this, you know, that they could then unlock some kind of a device that you could get, get it out, but, you know.
Yeah, I actually, I've, I've looked for that, from a cost perspective. Hospitals, for example, have that technology within the buildings. They can unlock different things, you know, code cards, things like that.
Yeah.
I, I just, you know, again, it all comes down to keeping this, we're, we're at the point now that's a very expensive capability to maintain. As I, as I mentioned, we have to replace about half of them, not in this capital, but the following capital, for the two, and I'm just, you know, I'm estimating right now it's seventy-five thousand dollars, so. And we're spending fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. Again, that's spread out over multiple departments, facilities, fire department, police department, school department, park and recs. And there's, you know, the annual is the pads have to be replaced every two years, they expire. That's why these things are so cheap, because they get you on the pads and then the batteries are anywhere from one to five years, and it depends on, and those are five hundred bucks when you replace them. When you saw them outside, it's every year.
And Chief, would you say that the situations where people most often need to use an AED are when a person's in their home? I mean, are those the kind of calls that, or is it, is there a certain area of town that?
There's no, I couldn't pinpoint it, I mean, obviously, elderly housing, there's probably more instances of, I mean, they're medical, emergency medical consumers more than anybody else. But we, you know, we certainly have them in areas where the people that we're concerned about, you know, council aging has them. Their staff is, we train their staff also specifically. They actually go through the full certification every two years, so.
All right, well, thank you for all your comments, you're really on top of it, appreciate it.
But, yeah.
It sounds like AEDs are part of the puzzle, people need more training. And I was wondering, now that we have, Lynn is doing the monthly town manager newsletter and I think that now that, with Dell Hamlin in people's minds, this could be a good time to get it trained together and get it announced in there, because I know that that gets a lot more eyeballs on it.
Yeah, so just a, for honor, there's a new NFPA three thousand class called ASHER. That actually is part of the response to violent acts, so active school shooter, business shooter and stuff like that. And that is rewritten to take a, more of a community approach to the response to violence, including caring for the people. So, there's accident, CPR, AED, stop the bleed and obviously, how to react to that. A lot of part of that, it's fairly new, I'm actually going to a seminar next week on it, so I can actually understand it better. But it's really a change in how communities respond and react to that. And certainly, I think there's going to be some opportunities with that. I'm really hoping for some grant money. I sit on the Homeland Security Council, it was a separate court meeting today with the FY federal, federal twenty-three funding to allocate several hundred thousand dollars to the region towards that training, so. Hopefully, those will spur more opportunities.
Can I ask for a sub-boy?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Nobody got, nobody had to get shocked, so that's good.
It's still early.
Yeah, you want me to leave it? Thank you.
All right, next under presentations, you have Eversource Gas Works. Do we have somebody coming on?
Yeah, we have a few members from, representatives from Eversource in the Zoom.
Hello, this is Matt Nichols, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Matt.
Hi, so Matt Nichols, I'm just engineer at Eversource Gas. Looks like Brian's here with me as well. I believe we also have Joe Mitchell, he's our communication specialist. So, let me share my screen and show you what we're talking about here. Oh, I can't share. Are you able to pull up the drawings?
I'm going to allow you to share right now. All right, you should be good.
All right, can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, so the first one is project called Longwood Ave, down the end here of Long Meadow Street. So, essentially, the gist of the project is we're tying into our existing plastic medium-pressure main up here at the intersection of Evans, running down Long Meadow Street and continuing our install onto Meadow Road and Longwood, Longwood Ave. And the goal of the project is to retire H cast iron on Longwood and Meadow Road. Sort of the, the long-term plan for this is, as you know, there's a Masquiat project on the docket for Long Meadow Street in the coming years. And so, our goal is to kind of get all of our H cast iron off of Long Meadow Street and all the surrounding streets. So, this is a roughly five thousand foot project that just kind of continues along that sort of golden there. Are there any questions?
This is, this is just half of the project that's before us tonight, right?
There's two projects, two separate projects. So, this one is Longwood and the other one, plus that per may.
Yeah.
I can move to that one if you'd like, I just want to make sure everybody got their questions about this one.
Yeah, Matt, this is Mark Gold, just a couple of questions. So, you said you're replacing H cast iron, I assume? Well, I won't assume anything. What, what are you replacing it with?
So, it's polyethylene plastic. And so, the H cast iron is a low-pressure system and our, sort of our long-term directive is to get everything off the low, all the customers off the low pressure and onto medium pressure, and that's what this project is. We're installing medium-pressure polyethylene, which is supposed to theoretically have a service life of forever. Whereas the cast iron just gets old and brittle and it's easily cracked and damaged by paving activities and the like.
So, when you, this is Josh again, when you stay onto a medium-pressure system, is the pressure actually changing? Or is it the, it can withstand a different pressure, the pipe?
So, it's a new, it's a brand-new pipe that we're installing. So, we're just going to be transferring the customers over from a low-pressure system to a medium-pressure system. And what, what that does is then the customers will then have regulators at their meters, which is another layer of safety for us.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, Tom McCusick, that's, that's my neighborhood and I recall being at the end of Longwood, running, smelling gas in the air and they, and they said, oh, it's coming out of this smother or something. So, I'm glad you're getting around to it, it's been a while. And they said, oh, it's coming out of this smother or something. So I'm glad you're getting around to it. It's been a while.
Yeah. So exactly. Cast iron just, it has the potential to crack and leak all the time. We have certain leaks that are much higher priority. And we address those, you know, ASAP. And then there's other leaks that are much lower priority depending on the severity. I'm guessing if there was a leak on Longwood, it must have been a very low priority one. But yeah, that's sort of, we do these projects based on like, you know, we have systems that identify this particular pipe that either has leaks in the past or is very leak-prone just based on its condition.
Yeah. I know the second time I was down in that area, I did not smell gas. So you probably did some preliminary work, but it sounds like this will make sure that the, you know, that it's completely repaired and ready for, how long will these last? Hopefully a hundred years?
Yeah, I mean theoretically, we hope that the plastic can stay in the ground forever.
As long as gas.
As long as it's in the cast iron, that's for sure.
Thank you. I have some questions, but the general questions.
Yeah, just, yeah. Matt, how many customers are involved in this Longwood project that will need to be, if you will, reconnected with the system? And is the pipeline going under the road or under the tree belt? You know, it just, the map shows it along the road. So are you digging up the roads?
Yes. So as for the customer count, I don't have an exact number for you, but I believe it's somewhere around fifty customers. So to kind of give you an idea of the line of main here, we went out and watched this project with Sean Van Dusen for the DPW. And he sort of, he presented, you know, a list of concerns in terms of trees and just other foreign utilities that we were, you know, wanting to avoid. And so with the help of him and our contractors, we came up with a line of main that everyone sort of agreed upon. So what we're going to do is grab our existing main here on Long Meadow Street, jump out into the road just off of the, just inside of the breakdown lane. And we're going to continue in the breakdown lane all the way down. And then when we reach Meadow Road here, we'll be going along the right side of the road, sort of, you know, five foot off of both the drain and the water and sewer there, just staying in the middle of those two. So we are in the road. We're not in the tree belt. We won't be disturbing any trees. And similar line of main on Longwood. It looks like we're going to be on the left side of the road for that one. So we will actually be cutting the road. But minimal, you know, our goal here is minimal disturbance to the trees and also foreign utilities.
So you're, I mean, my concern is that as we tear up the roads, two things. One is, I assume you're going to repave the roads because you always do. But, you know, while the roads are paved up, torn up and being repaved on your dime, you know, we may want to look at doing something under that road at the same time on our dime, but not repaving it. The other thing is, you know, I have a particular bugaboo. We now have a policy that, you know, the repair has to be at least six feet wide. It can't be just the width of the pipeline. I just want to make sure you were aware of that or have been made aware of that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, we will comply with all, you know, we'll be in contact with you guys throughout the course of this and with the DPW, you know, and Sean. And we'll make sure we comply with, you know, all the needs of the town. I don't, I believe we looked at the paving this. I don't know if Longwood or Meadow Road are planned to be paved by Long Meadow DPW in the coming years. I do know Long Meadow Street will be. But yeah, we will, we'll definitely repair the trench to the best of our quality.
Yeah, the last thing I was going to say is that the town of Long, and I don't know what EverSource does, but the town of Long Meadow has sandy soil. We've had a fatality from a cave-in of digging. And I think you need to require caissons to be used while you're digging. And I know it sounds ridiculous, but I wouldn't want to see an accident happen again because it's happened in the past, fairly recent past in the town of Long Meadow. It's extraordinarily sandy soil. And if you're going to be digging, you ought to be aware of that. And I don't know if that's been taken into account in your process, but I think it needs to be.
Was that, was that an open trench? Like a trench that was left open overnight?
No. Somebody was, somebody was, you know, it was a trench, but they were temporarily replacing a sewer. It happened, the death was to a contractor.
Okay.
I mean.
All right. That's good, that's good to know.
So, you know, I don't know, and Sean wasn't, Sean, you know, Van Dusen wasn't here at the time, but it's a particular, you know, risk in Long Meadow or hazard in Long Meadow. And, you know, I think it ought to be required, and we haven't been able to do that.
Right. Of course. But that was a kind of a particular place on Hazardville, you know, Hazard, where they've, they water collect there. And people have actually put boats on the water. It's been, so that was significantly, you know, you should see if there's any areas of water collection, just to be sure. But I think that was kind of a unique, in my opinion. But I did have another question. Are you going to replace the gas meters in these homes?
Uh, yes.
And?
Any gas meter that need replacing will be replaced.
Yeah. And, you know, I've seen some gas meters that were put in positions that I really thought took away from especially historical homes. Is, are these things that will be put on the side of a home? Or I guess part of it, I think first of all, if these homes are not, there may be some homes there that are about a hundred years old. But in historic district, I think that, you know, gas company would need to meet some requirements of the historic district if they're putting in meters, that they shouldn't just put them where it's convenient for the person putting it in, you know, that it should be on the side of the house or where it can be easily covered. So with these, I, you know, I hopefully you'll consult with the homeowners and you can come up with a spot where it, you know, when you look at the front of the house, you don't see a big meter jumping out at you. I don't know if you have a policy on that.
Hey, Matt, this is Brian McCall. I'll just jump in here and answer that one. So we do have a piping group and the construction service supervisors do go out to all these addresses beforehand to meet with the customers to make sure it's kind of agreeable location for the new meters. We do try to make those concessions and try to not put it in a horrible spot. They do meet with every single customer prior to like just sticking a meter on the side of your house with no input from a customer.
Right.
We've done that.
The thing is that, you know, some customers are more aware of what's going on than others in terms of like historical district regulations. And so, you know, as you do this in different parts of town, especially in historic district or a home that seems to be, you know, a couple hundred years old, I think you should be checking with the Historic Preservation Commission in some way.
Yeah, I know. We have, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I'll go, Brian. So this is Joe Mitchell with Community Relations. How you doing, select board members? As recently as, I think the week before last, I reached out to Ben Simmons, who put me in touch with Margaret Cohn of the Historical Commission. And it actually wasn't a house that's in historic district, but one of the ones that's numbered in your historic, is it ledger or whatever? So we do, when we're aware and we know where the historic district is in town, we do work with the historic commission and as per your historic zoning, put the meters on the sidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
No, thank you. Could you introduce the second part of the project, please?
Sure. So yeah, just to be, just to clarify, these are two separate unrelated projects. But yeah, we're done with Longwood. I can.
Well, I have some, I have some questions that'll apply to both. And I don't know if anybody else has. Maybe there's some specific questions on this. We can cover it, but mine cover both.
I have more of a general question. It might, it might help more. Go ahead.
So why don't you introduce the second project? I understand they're separate, but, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So yeah, this one is called Bliss at Burbank. And right along the same vein, we're just going to be tying into our existing medium pressure, installing polyethylene medium pressure down these streets. Looks like we have Bliss, Burbank, here. Oakwood, this is another side street, and Blockland. So as you know, obviously, the school is right there. We did talk with Sean about that. And we're going to, in the interest of, you know, the kids walking the sidewalk and everything going on and the, you know, traffic and all that stuff, we determined sort of the best course of action was for us to kind of run along the edge of the road here on the north, north side of the road. We will most likely have to shut down that lane, so we'll have to detour traffic around. I did create a traffic plant here that shows that. So we're going to detour people up over Bellevue, on the Concord, and sort of back around over on the Oakwood, and back down onto Bliss here.
So my, my initial question would be on this project. How long would you anticipate the, this traffic disruption to be necessary?
So just kind of look here. So fifty to a hundred feet a day. Looking at probably like two, three weeks. But it'll be sections at a time. So it won't be this entire stretch of Bliss that's going to be shut down all at once. It'll sort of be, you know, bits at a time.
So will you need the detour the whole time? Or are there part, at some points, we'll be able to do just one lane and have a traffic officer directing there?
I mean, that's another option. My thought was just that with the amount of traffic that, you know, Sean had said flows through here, it might end up backing things up. You know, if you only have one side to go at a time, it could cause a massive backup. But I'm, you know, we're open to opinions on that if you guys disagree.
Josh, Josh, you mentioned that because your question's good. When do you anticipate starting this? Because if two to three weeks and it's a school area, can we make at least one of those weeks a school vacation week?
I believe we're starting next week. So is there, is there a February vacation?
We will not hit February vacation. It's the third week.
We could always move the job around where we don't start on Bliss. We start somewhere else. And at least then one of the weeks is during that food break too.
Are these two jobs going to be done concurrently or is you going to do them sequentially?
Concurrently, two different crews. And the other thing I just wanted to throw out there, you know, like Bliss, I know we did a lot of work over on Forest Glen kind of the end of last year. And I don't know if Bliss is the same where it's kind of busy, morning rush hour, afternoon rush, but during the day, it's not too bad. So it could be something that the detours just set up for those rush hours and then normal traffic just gets detoured around the work we're doing per day. Like it's something we could work with Sean or the police department with that.
I mean, just as somebody who drives down there three or four times a day, it's going to be a nightmare no matter what time. But I have some more general questions. I know Sean passed some of these on when you walked around with them. So last summer, there was an EverSource truck that damaged a town tree on Bliss Road that was while performing work on a power line. Are you, will you be working near any trees on this project? And do you have any plans for tree protection if you're working near a tree?
Yeah, that was definitely one of the things that Sean brought up as a major concern. And yeah, we'll do everything we can to protect the tree. Like I said, we picked our line of main with, to, you know, sort of have minimal disturbance to the trees. But if, you know, so happens that even digging in the road, maybe we hit a root or something and, you know, it damages the tree, we have every intention of replacing that.
Some of our trees are pretty tough to replace, I think, there. Have you talked to Sean in his capacity as a tree warden on any trees in particular that should be of concern on the roots?
He didn't point any out when we were on Bliss Road. There was one that I believe on Burbank that he said was, you know, basically almost dead. But we decided to go the opposite side of the road of that tree. So we don't anticipate of getting disturbance there.
Okay. So just circle back with him on that specific issue. And then I asked, so the project on Bliss Road in particular, will that be three? I know you said you can push the Bliss Road part back. Is that three weeks just on Bliss Road? Or is it?
Yeah. I mean, in all reality, it could go even, it could go a bit longer. That was just kind of a very rough estimate I gave based on the footage. But yeah, probably about three weeks, two to three weeks spent on Bliss Road.
So those are pretty heavily trafficked sidewalk areas. Are there any plans? Or are you on the same side of the street as the sidewalk? And if so, do you have any plans for, to ensure pedestrian safety and ADA accessibility to the sidewalk?
Yeah. That was, again, another point that Sean had brought up, and that's why we picked the line of main that we did. We intend to have minimal to zero disturbance of the foot traffic on the sidewalk. And obviously, you know, the work area will be coned off and there'll be traffic officers and everything. So we don't anticipate any disruptions to the flow of the sidewalk itself.
Do you plan to have a traffic officer on the, and this applies to both projects, directing traffic the entire project?
Yes, entire project.
And have you consulted with the fire department on the project?
I don't believe we've talked with the fire department yet.
Okay. So that, absolutely have to do that, not just for safety purposes, but also emergency, emergency response vehicles so they are aware of all the routes if there's any issues getting vehicles through, especially if there's going to be traffic issues on Bliss.
Okay, we'll do.
And my final general question, how long will any specific individual lose service per the plan? Are we talking about one day while their change of connection or is it going to be longer than that?
It's less than a day. Usually, Brian, correct me, like four hours in the last they're out of service?
Yeah, we always just try to say a day. So it's just that one changeover day that needs to be done. I mean, it could be done in a couple hours. It's just, it varies depending on kind of what your situation is per customer, but just one day.
What provisions have you made for people who may not be here? You know, people may go away for a week or be in Florida for three weeks.
Yeah, no, we just, we just, we have to wait on them until we can get access into their house. It's like in the winter, we're never going to shut somebody's gas off during cold.
So you'll have both systems running until everybody's switched over?
Correct. Yeah, in that case, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
They make it sound nice, but I hadn't, they hadn't been able to reach me. And they said, if we don't reach you, we'll turn your electricity, your power off, your gas off. And a year, they give you a year, but still, it isn't like they just say you can never get in touch with them.
Well, my concern, Tom, is that, you know, fifty customers are, give or take, in Longwood. I assume there's forty or fifty customers in Bliss. That's a lot of people in Long Meadow who we have to get in contact with, all within the same, as you noted, several-hour period that we want to get to. And I just want to make sure that we don't end up leaving any houses cold.
How do you get in contact with customers, tell them that their actual changeover date? Is it letters or knocking on doors?
Yeah, every customer gets a letter. And then we do send out people and kind of knock on doors if we don't get responses. Then there's, we have contractors and their supervisors kind of have a whole running list of everybody they made contact to, the houses that have gas. And kind of if we're missing anybody, then we just start kind of chasing through any type of way we can get it. We'll chase any email contact we've had, old phone numbers, and just kind of keep pounding to try to track down that customer if they're not responding to anything else.
So will, will you notify the town when your conversion has been completed? Because if you're starting next week with construction, I assume that a couple of weeks after that, you'll start the conversion of houses to the, to feed off the new polyethylene line. At what point do you anticipate being complete?
I don't know the exact timeline for this project.
I mean, in theory, it could be April if people are away, right?
Sorry, what was that?
I mean, somebody who's away for the winter and doesn't come back through April, till April, theoretically, you're going to have to leave the gas line feed to their house till April, right? I mean, what I didn't hear, I didn't hear certified letters. I didn't hear anything over the media systems. What I heard was, you know, we're going to knock on doors. That's probably the most, you know, ineffective way of contacting people that I know of in this town. Now, I would think you'd send a certified letter to every, every resident. Now, I would think you'd send a certified letter to every, every resident saying, here's the plan, you need to contact us.
Yeah, I mean, we, we send the letters, we send the emails out, we call all the phone numbers that we have for them. But th- these jobs aren't, aren't planned to be finished until I think May, end of April and that's if everything goes to plan.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, this is Dan Zwarko. I definitely share, uh, the similar sentiments, uh, to my peers here, Josh and, and Mark. I think this is a heavily trafficked area around the schools, Blockland being one of them, uh, between Williams Middle School and Blueberry Hill. Um, so my, I guess biggest concern is the traffic from the kids going to and from school and the drop offs. Um, I'm just curious, could, could this project be moved into late June into the summer? Um, I just wanted to get the feedback, um, on if that's a potential, uh, change.
Um, I mean, I suppose we could talk with our scheduling department and see if that's a possibility. Um, we kind of just backs up our entire schedule and that's all. Cause Long, Long Meadow is one of the few towns that lets us work in the winter. So it's not like we can swap out another town or, or something.
And then there's also that proposed sidewalk, uh, project, I think the, the city has going on, on Bliss that we're trying to stay away from the same timing was. So I, I don't know exactly how long that's going to take, but I think that will starting kind of summertime this year, running that sidewalk.
I, I don't mean to be, uh, uncouth, but if we had heard about the scheduling before it was already scheduled, uh, we could have brought this up, uh, before and talked about the school issue before, but I understand, uh, I'm taking it with a gift sometimes.
No, and, um, so Matthew, my understanding too, you know, cause Mark's concerned about if people are in Florida, but you can replace, you know, the, the cast iron pipe with the new, new, uh, polypropylene. You could run the line up to the outside of the house and sort of set up the meter. And then all you really need the homeowner is to be there to go inside and connect it to their system, right? So, I mean, that isn't something that has to happen. You know, it can happen on the homeowner's schedule a little bit more easily than yours because, uh, everything else will be set up, correct?
So Brian, we'll take this one. It's okay with you or Matt. I have so many children. Um, yeah, so, um, we understand how there may be some consternation that we, um, can't get hold of residents, but, um, we do this all the time and we do start with, um, people see the trucks outside, hey, what's going on? And then our, our field technicians tell them that what's going on and eventually someone's going to come to your house. And, um, we get like a line shared in the first try, but then you're correct, then we do have, because they are our customers and they're all, um, registered, we have their phone numbers and things like that. If it did come down to it, we would send registered letters because we do want to get the, um, uh, the older pipe, which is still energized with natural gas, which is made of cast iron and it's, you know, leak prone. Um, we get graded, we get credited when it's finally abandoned. So even though we go up the street and we get 49 customers on the new pipe, that one customer that's still on the old pipe, you know, the old pipe is still in service and we don't get credit for abandoning that. So then we, there's, there's a hyper focus and we find the individual and we get the time to, um, and it is, it really is about safety, um, as far as we going in, uh, we're making connection, then relighting the pilots just so that the, our customer in your constituent is in the safest possible position.
And so the, based on that time, the cast iron stays, the old pipe stays in the ground after you switch over, correct?
Yeah, so, um, that's kind of, yeah, what Joe was saying is the bulk of the work is getting our main installed, gassing it up, um, and then sort of get customers tied over. And we don't actually abandon, the very, very final step is abandoning cast iron.
But even, well, my question is even when it's abandoned, it's still in the ground. Is there any, and I, I assume you do this all the time, is there any safety hazard with the, the old pipe staying in there?
Um, not that I know of, uh, I've never heard of any horror stories or anything.
We, uh, we go hurt, so what we do, um, select board members, um, once the last customer's off of the old pipe, you know, we close the valve on the pipe so there's no, um, service to it anymore. We actually make a physical disconnect from our system and then we purge it with, um, uh, inert gas, typically nitrogen. So now it's just, it's a piece of steel in the ground buried and it stays there for eternity.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Yeah, and to, and just to chime in on that a little bit, to, to remove that entire cast iron main would, uh, you know, cause a lot more disturbance too. So that's why it's in our best interest to just leave it there.
Okay.
Josh, my, my take on this is they're, they're informing us of the project they're going to do. There's no permission needed, although they do need road opening permits. And I assume that, you know, going back to my original concern, that the DPW will inform you of the cave in hazard potential in Long Meadow. So when you do open these roads, you take every precaution necessary.
And I'd also like, like to reinforce that you have been informed about needing, meeting the needs of our historical commission and our, um, historical district. And if we get complaints, um, you know, I, I hope this board would be supportive of, of you doing repair work, um, to make sure you meet all the requirements. And it sounds like you've already sort of opened that road, but, um, um, just so you know that, you know, I, it's, we, our town character is, is really important to home values and, and so we protect it pretty, uh, pretty seriously. Thank you.
Anything else for us on the board?
Thank you folks for taking the time to come before the board.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it and I, I, we have, there's a lot of talk about gas infrastructure in our town, but, uh, it's also important to, what we do have, when we're using natural gases, to keep it as safe as possible. So I'm glad to see any work on that behalf. Um, all right. So that's it from us. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, Mike and Lynn, for our information, when was the first time we heard about this? Was this last week?
Yes.
Interesting.
Yep.
Is that pretty standard to hear like a week ago on this or?
Um, a project of this magnitude or these two projects, uh, we would like much more notice than this. Uh, if it wasn't last week, it was the week before, but it's been no more than 14 days notice. Uh, and given the, um, um, you know, expansive area that they're, they're working, um, the director brought this to me and I felt that it should come to you for certainly the public component of notification, but also so that you're aware of the extent of it because I don't know about your email or phones, um, but I know mine and I know the fire chiefs. As soon as any ever source work starts in town, our phones and our emails start, um, going with inquiries about whether this is the reliability project. Uh, and so we wanted to make sure that the public had an opportunity to learn about what this is and that it is not the Western Mass reliability project, but certainly they should know what this is.
Thank you, Lynn, thanks. Uh, next on the agenda, we have DEI committee interviews. Gabriel, if you'd like to come up?
Yes.
Uh, thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Pastor.
Could you, uh, send your name and address?
Yes. My name is Gabriel Marqua. My address is 92 Riverview Avenue, Long Meadow.
Okay. Um, and so thank you for coming in tonight, uh, and for your interest in the committee. Uh, I know a little bit of your story, um, but if you would, uh, just tell us what drew you to your interest in the DEI committee?
Sure. I, um, first of all, I'm married, I'm a father of four. Um, I'm a retired state worker. Um, I live in town past 15 years. Um, I'm a member of, um, Long Meadow Anti-Racism Commission, uh, Council, um, what do you call it? Council, uh, so, um, I live here, my kids went through to this, uh, school system and I would like to, um, I think it's my chance to contribute towards this town to make it more equitable, more, um, livable for people of color, I don't use the word color, but I don't like to use that word, but people of different backgrounds. You know, it's, um, I came to this country at age 12 as an immigrant from Nigeria. I didn't speak English, I have to work hard and I have to learn the language. Um, I just want to make sure people come to this town, they feel comfortable, no matter who they are, no matter the religion, no matter what, you know, no matter what background they are, they should be come to this town and feel comfortable and feel welcome. And I feel like I can contribute towards that.
And, uh, are you familiar with any of the other people that we have recently been named to the, uh, committee?
Would I, I'm not familiar with everybody, but I think I've heard some names, but I certainly have, uh, looked at, uh, the core, uh, gold of the committee, you know, committee. And that's something I'm very interested in.
Uh, are you a member of LARQ?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And so, uh, Lynn, let me, correct me if I misspeak on anything here. Uh, we recently ran by, uh, there was a question of whether, cause LARQ and the DEI committee are going to have some overlapping, uh, discussions at least. And, uh, that we have an open meeting law in Massachusetts that anything that is discussed, uh, by a committee has to be put on an agenda, has to be done so that the public knows that it's being discussed. If a quorum, so more than half of the DEI committee is on LARQ and is discussing committee business, there's a possibility of an open meeting violation. Um, so there's, uh, two things could happen really. The LARQ could not discuss things that are going on with the DEI committee or, uh, people may have to choose between LARQ and the DEI committee. Um, so I want to make sure you're aware of that and, uh, it's something to, to think about, um, and, uh, if that changes your decision at all, but I wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
No, I think, actually I think it's two different, um, uh, what do you call it? The way I look at it, like anti, anti racism activism has nothing to do with, uh, what we're talking about. You know, uh, what we do at LARQ is different. It's basically people in the committee coming together to find solution to some other issues that we have. Uh, this is clearly the government part of it, you know? Anything that we discuss through this, uh, if I'm lucky enough to be appointed, will be open and transparent, I'll be recorded. I think LARQ is a different organization. Um, people are free to join, they're not appointed, they're not government, um, appointed people. So I think that's going to, I think that's like apple and orange. I don't think we're going to take something from here and go discuss it and LARQ can bring it back. I don't think that's something that, uh, I think it would be inappropriate.
And I, I hope that's the case. I, I'm just, uh, an example would be if LARQ is discussing something that the town would like to see the town do and there is a, a quorum of, uh, DEI members at that meeting, it, it can be an issue. So I'm just putting it out there.
I don't think they do, I don't, hopefully, hopefully there will not be acting as if they represent the town because they're not. They're representing, you know, themselves and LARQ. I think LARQ, most of our meetings, we basically talk about how to make the town better and more inclusive. And I think it has to do with, uh, uh, what do you call, uh, gender or this, that's basically what we do. We sit around and try to find, you know, to the work with different organizations to make the town a little more, um, bring a little more love to the town.
And so what, what do you see the DEI committee, uh, doing? What, what do you see as the, uh, the committee would set out to do?
Sure. I mean, like someone who have lived here 15 years, I've, you know, like I, I'm living in, you know, I want to see certain things, um, that I have question about, I have asked question about, I'm not satisfied with the answer. You know, I like to see, I want to know why is it that people like me, um, do not want to come to Long Meadow and live here? I want to know why people like me do not want to come and teach at Long Meadow? I want to know why people like me don't come and be a police officer, be a firefighter at Long Meadow? Um, so that's a question I've asked, um, I should have gone into offices and asked of some of those people in charge of those departments. And, you know, it's something that we all have to work together. I don't think there's, there's no admissory. There's something that we have to work as a group, as human beings. We are human beings. You know, it's, you know, it takes love to create society where everybody's going to be, want to be part of it. I'd see, my kids, I mix, my wife is white, as you can see, I'm black. I like to see a community, I like to see a town where I can walk the street without feeling, um, like being injured or, or not feel comfortable. Hopefully that's what we're all working towards. I think that's where, that's my experience that I can bring to this committee.
Thanks. Tom?
Well, uh, you know, I really appreciate you stepping forward. I, I know you've been here over an hour now.
Yes.
Hopefully you, you saw that the work of this board is, is kind of important stuff and, and, you know, this is, I hope this is just a gateway committee for you. That you'll consider other committees in towns, there's a lot, in town, there's a lot of them that, um, you know, you could really contribute to. Uh, again, this came out of the racial equity task force that we set up. And so, um, I'm thrilled that you're, you're stepping forward to help us with this.
Thank you, thank you. As I said, for me, it's personal, like to want to, you know, um, be part of this. Cause like I said, I have kids that went through the school sys, went through the school system here. You know, I want them to grow up. I feel like this time it just has what it is there as anybody else. You know, I think sometimes we don't feel that, you know? We have ways to go as a community, but we all, this is our community, this is where I live, this is where I choose to live, this is where I'm going to live. Um, so it's something that I, uh, my life is serious as an immigrant who struggled, um, who went through racism, who went through, who also want to be part of the solution who's supporting them. That's why I'm here. I'm not just here to, I have other things I can be doing, but I have chosen to give my time to kind of Long Meadow because I want to be part of the solution.
Thank you. Anything else from us on the board?
Yeah, more of a, a comment. You might recall, we spoke, uh, at Riverview at your, at your doorstep.
Yes.
And I just really appreciate you stepping up and, um, everything you're doing right now for the community and, and I went home that day. Um, just, it was such an impactful conversation that you had with me and, um, we certainly can do better in this town and, and I really appreciate you stepping up, uh, to serve. So, thank you.
We are going to do better. I'm very optimistic, very optimistic.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you. So we don't vote on tonight, we, uh, we'll vote at a future meeting.
Take your time, guys.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming in.
DCU.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
All right, next up we have DEI committee appointments. Uh, entertain a motion to name Ronnie Levitt to the DEI committee?
Second.
Right, move?
Uh, yes, so moved.
All right, and I'll second. Uh, any further discussion on Ronnie? Tom?
I just, you know, I, you know, Ronnie, um, came across as a, a, a great contributor, but, um, you know, I just, you know, I, I, my stand has, hasn't changed much. You know, I see this as a racial diversity issue and that, um, so I, I'm going to vote against her being on the committee and then the fact that there's so many people in LARQ on this committee that I just, I, we have to straighten that out, um, before I can add another person from, from LARQ on it, of course. So that's, you know, nothing personal against Ronnie, but, um, I think she has great, great things that she brings to the table.
Can I?
Go ahead, Dan.
I, I, I mean, I, we all sat here, listened to, um, to Ronnie's story and, and what she's done for the, the Afghan people locally. Um, uh, she's also a woman. I think we need to get more women, um, on boards in town. I think she's an exceptional candidate and, and I'm going to support her. And I hope maybe you'll, uh, change your minds here, but.
She'd have to do a lot of change in between now and then. Sorry. She can't, things she can't change by herself. It's just we can't, we can't tell people in the African-American community that we have a racial equity task force solution to looking at racial issues in town and then have, you know, maybe, we'll be lucky if we have two people on it that are people of color. They're not going to believe us.
I, I won't relitigate this, uh, but I will mention on the LARQ point, uh, I don't know if we can, uh, look at private, membership in a private group and consider that and naming a, to a public board or committee. So, uh, and I guess I will relitigate a little bit on the, the diversity point. Uh, we, uh, like I said before, we're, we have to start something here and we can't force people to, to speak. We can't force people to sign up for, uh, this committee. I'm grateful to everyone who has and I, I hope we do get, uh, people with different backgrounds as a... as Mr. McKeough said, in the future, but I'm grateful to people who have applied now. So, any further on this? Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Moving on to resident comments. Anybody signed up, Mike?
Not that I see.
None in the audience? Okay. Moving on to select board comments. I will mention Chief Dearborn has left, but I want to thank the fire department for their bravery and hard work with the Dunn Street Fire. It sounded like a scary time, and I'm glad to be able to salvage what they could, and then, and find the dog, thank God. But I, the center school committee, center school community I know has really stepped up and helping the family out, an incredible amount of donations, and I'm sure people in town otherwise and in other schools have stepped up, but it's really, when a tragedy in our town happens, it's really heartwarming to see people step up. So I want to thank the fire department and everyone who has volunteered or donated or whatever to help the family. Appreciate it. Mark, did your hand up?
Yeah, I have a few things. I'll start with my favorite topic, which is the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board. I attended their meeting this, last week, their monthly board meeting, and after several fails, failures to act, they did in fact eliminate their audit committee, which was, I thought ridiculous, but they did. I communicated that to several people. I actually sent a letter to the chair of the Hampton County Retirement Board telling him why I thought it was a mistake, and it was an individual letter, not reflecting the select board, but, and also that the fact that it was clear from that meeting that the members of that board didn't understand what the intent, what the job was of an audit committee. And so several people were talking about, well, we don't want them to do these things, and other people saying, well, we want it to really be an audit committee, and it's clear because they never really established the goals and responsibilities of an audit committee. But be that as it may, they rejected and withdrew their audit committee. I think that's bad for the Hampton County Retirement Board. Another follow-up on there, I will say that in this past week, the state legislature, through our representative Brian Ashen, his legislative aide, Robin Frichette, has refiled legislation looking to reorganize the board of Hampton County Retirement Board. We don't know where it's gonna be. I will say that prior to refiling the legislation, it was tweaked based on comments that we got from John Parsons, who's the chair of PIRAC, which is the Pension Investment Board, who had had some comments about the legislation that was filed last fall. And so based on the comments that we got from PIRAC, we've tweaked the proposed legislation, and we'll continue to follow that, and I'll let this board know what's going on. Couple other quick things is that I've had some meetings, and in fact, today I got another thing from Nick Georgianis, who's the town engineer. And so the board needs to know that we've had discussions off and on about the display cases here in the high school, the glass display cases. We believe that we've come up with a much, 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 much lower cost solution to the issue, that they've actually put in a sample, a test piece of glazing there that I challenge anybody to see that it's different from what's in there, and so I think they're gonna go forward with that. So I think Nick's on top of that, and it's not gonna cost the tens or more thousands of dollars than it was, and I know people have talked about what's going on with that. So hopefully, it's gonna, it may, it may take a couple of thousand dollars because of the labor, but it should be all set. The other thing I wanted to mention was that there was an interesting article in the newspaper about Springfield investing their stabilization fund in treasury bills, and I think it's worth noting that, I mean, I've been on this board for a long time, and for most of the time, we were in a very low interest rate environment, and, you know, which was good for our borrowing and not so much good for our investing, and it looks like things have turned around and may continue that way, and I just want to make sure that we encourage our town treasurer, our town, you know, CFO or interim CFO, that we make sure we take advantage of the high interest rates while we have them. And I don't know whether we want to invest our long-term stabilization fund in something at high interest rates, but I know there's a talk about us going out to borrow for major capital projects in the coming months or years, and I know we're gonna pay a pretty premium for those interest rates, so we may want to look at that now. And so I just wanted to comment on that. The final thing I was gonna say is that, and we're gonna speak about this later today, we're gonna set the warrant for the special town election. For people who don't know, we have a special town election. Josh, you had mentioned it in our meeting, our announcements at the beginning of the meeting. We have three people running for one seat by our current bylaws. We have to have a preliminary election. So the election of this fifth member of the select board is gonna end up being rather expensive for the town of Long Meadow. We're gonna have two elections, and I think we ought to take another look at, or take a first look at ranked choice voting. A ranked choice voting system, for people who don't know, allows a single election to take care of this kind of multiple system where it's not just the person with the plurality, but in fact, ranked choice voting forces somebody to get a majority of the votes. It would save the town an awful lot of money. It is being done in other, at least one other community in Massachusetts that I'm aware of, and, you know, I think we ought to take a look at it to the point where I'd like to encourage Lynn or somebody else, or maybe our town clerk, to look at this as a potential for putting on our annual town meeting warrant, to see if we can't do this for local elections. This isn't something that would work for national elections or statewide elections, but it could work for our local elections. Here's an instance where it would have saved the town many thousands of dollars, I won't even guess how much it is. So I just wanted to throw that out there, because I think it's a system whose time has come. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. To Mark's point, couldn't we make an amendment to the bylaw potentially if we suggest that a seat that is vacant, like the one that's vacant now, under a certain timeframe, would just be filled in that annual town election, rather than ranked? I'm not suggesting opposed to ranked choice voting, but had we had something in the bylaws that stated, this seat is coming up in June, and now, and we chose not to fill it as a board, and there's a petition, but if we had language in there that says the board would remain four people until that annual election, based on when the seat is up, that could also be a potential option.
Yeah, it's clearly an alternative route, but, you know, my only comment about ranked choice voting, Dan, is that even in our general election, that comes up in June, you know, if we have three people running for the seat, or in fact, if we have five people running for two seats on the school committee, we would need a preliminary election. So ranked choice voting not only would help in special elections, but in theory could help in our general election, you know, townwide election system that requires us to go from, you know, however many candidates we have, down to two times the number of seats.
What was our school committee preliminary last year? Five for three or something?
Yeah.
That was a good example of...
No, I think we only eliminated one person, but maybe we eliminated...
It was five for four, yeah, that's right, yeah.
But you're right. It's a, you know, it's a system who, the systems are in place that deal with it. We've got now some, at least one town, maybe two towns in Massachusetts who have done it and got some experience doing it. It's not, you know, it's not so, you know, so comprehensive that it's well-understood, but I think we can explain it to people and say, just put people, you know, first choice, second choice, third choice, fourth choice, and the system will take care of it.
I know we get some weird ballots already, so...
Oh, well, I haven't looked at the ballots.
But as for your question, Dan, I think that there, the statute, the Mass statute has a timeline when they, it has to be accepted, but I don't remember if there's an exception, if it's, the bylaws may be able to supersede that.
Gotcha.
So only if the statute has a hook for that, and I don't remember off the top of my head.
And a select board member has to be elected as well.
Can't be appointed, right.
Can't be appointed.
School committee vacancies, we can appoint, vacancies, but even, like I said, the general election, as Josh pointed out, in June, you know, we have a, we can have a preliminary election and the final election.
We don't know what's gonna happen now, yeah.
But locally, could we have a bylaw that states a select board member could be appointed?
No.
No?
I would not.
Like, I know you came with school committee, I didn't know if that's a state or a...
No, because we're the premier, the executive of the town, so I don't think, yeah.
Might be a conflict.
I mean, the question, Dan, is, some towns use, for example, Springfield, if they have an opening in the city council, the person who got the next most number of votes, but I don't even know if he could do that in Long Meadow, so, or if we'd want to.
Yeah, I think those are good ideas, Mark. I just want some looking into for us.
And the other, the only comment I had was for, since we're on the topic of the election, and Lynn, I brought this up before, but people don't know about the election. They don't know about the preliminary election, they don't know about the special election. A lot of people don't, because I'm having those conversations, people are asking me, what's up with these signs? Are you running? Nope. So anyways, I'm just, I just wish that we would have more visibility at the entrance of town, both entrances, with the digital signs, notifying residents that we have a special election on January, I'm sorry, on February 7th, preliminary, and then the general election, which would be on March 7th. And I don't think it takes too much work for us to put up digital signs notifying people as they enter Long Meadow. It's something I've been, we have low turnout as it is, and in a special election, there's gonna be low turnout. We should be promoting people to get out and vote. So just my suggestion.
I thought you were just gonna knock on everyone's door.
Three years.
Tom? All right, moving on to town manager's report.
Thank you. So in my report that's available online, you can see the quarterly legal expense update. There has been a minor amount of changes since the last update I provided in October. It's been somewhat quiet legal bill-wise. I don't anticipate it will stay that way for some of our matters, including the DPW case or cases. And then I do anticipate we'll get some further legal bills soon for the gas-related work. But in terms of the other general town council and labor council, those are, have modestly changed, but we shouldn't see any big spikes in those, at least not that I'm aware of at the moment. And we did have some increase in the cable license attorney fees. That was related to the ongoing negotiation for the operating agreement. But all in all, it was a fairly modest increase from October to January, and we're still within our budgeted amounts. We received a Sustainable Materials Recovery Program municipal grant from Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection in the amount of $20,900. This enhances the performance of our waste reduction programs. The recycling dividends program provides payments to municipalities that have implemented specific programs and policies, proven to maximize reuse, recycling, and waste reduction. Municipalities receive payments according to the number of criteria points their program earns based on 2022 grant guidelines and the number of residents that we serve. The RDP, the Recycling Dividends Program, provides an incentive for municipalities to improve their recycling programs by implementing best practices, reward and rewards communities with model recycling and waste reduction programs. In 2022, so last year, we also received this grant, and it was spent on the Valley Green Shred Event, blue overflow bags, compost pails, blue recycling bins, printing out of the curbside trash and recycling calendar, and recycle center pass stickers. And I'm excited to announce, through a great effort between the treasure collector Erica Brunel and administrative assistant Mike Barbieri, they developed an annual town report cover photo contest. So we are seeking resident assistance in creating the cover for this year's annual report. If people are interested, we ask that you submit your original drawing or photo with specific guidelines. We want it to highlight historical or significant aspect of the town, which could be a building, event, location, et cetera. Creativity is strongly encouraged, but the work must be original. Submissions should be emailed to Erica Brunel, so it's ebrunel@longmeadow.org. Include your name, address, contact information, and caption. If the picture includes people, you must have their permission to submit the photo for this purpose. Residents of all ages are encouraged to participate. All submissions must be received by March 1st at noon. Winners will be determined by voting, open to all residents March 6th through the 15th, through an online and in-person option. We'll release more details on that voting as we get closer. Photo credit will be given, and prizes will be announced at a later date. If you have any questions on this, you can reach out to adminassistant@longmeadow.org or ebrunel@longmeadow.org. And that concludes my report tonight.
Are select board members eligible for the...
You have to submit it blind through, huh?
So you mentioned prizes, so I'm, part of my interest, no. Is it gonna be more than one photo or just one?
It's yet to be determined.
Yet to be determined.
Yeah, I think there's potential for different layouts for the cover. I mean, we've done annual report covers before where there's been multiple photos. It could be one. I guess we're open to suggestions, but we'll also see what comes in for pictures.
Okay. I also, I had a question about the first, about the recycling, and, you know, we look at recycling materials, especially metal, you know, I know, people will take junk metal that they have in their house, and they can go to a recycler, and they run the risk of maybe getting a flat tire or something, because those aren't the easiest places to go in and out of. But shouldn't we just accept metal that's gonna be recycled? I mean, we make money, good money off of metal, and so like, you know, I saw some cast iron tubs and sinks and stuff, I'm thinking, boy, if they took them to DPW or to the recycling center, the town could make out.
There's a, there's a big dumpster down there, one for wood and one for metal.
No, no, but I mean, even people without a sticker, if they wanted to just drop off metal, you'd think that that would be something we would accept from residents or...
With a sticker.
You know.
Yeah. We won't take it without a sticker. You have to have a sticker to use the recycling center.
Yeah. I mean, most people who are gonna take the trouble of putting it on a trailer are gonna probably take it, get money for it, but, all right.
I mean, you go in the middle, that dumpster's full. People are throwing away metal.
Yeah.
Because it's a pain to find the right place to recycle it. There's a guy in town, Jack the Junk Man, who just picks it all up, and he knows where to take it.
Yeah.
That's how he makes money. Good for him. Yeah. No further comment from me. Anybody else? For department monthly reports, Mark, are these what the reports you've been asking for?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Yep.
I smiled when I saw them.
I did, too.
Last week. Good, okay. Any questions on any of the reports? Moving on to our only piece of old business today, approval of the January 3rd, 2023 minutes.
I'll move, we approve the minutes of the January 3rd, 2023 select board meeting.
Second.
Anything further? All those in favor? First up on new business, we have our fiscal year 2022 audit report. Approach whoever is going to speak.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tanya Campell. I'm here tonight to present the results of the town's fiscal year 2022 audit. As of a few weeks ago, I was a partner at Melanson, but effective the 1st of the year, we have merged with Markham, which is a national accounting firm. Yeah, very exciting. We're, you know, it's been a crazy week for us, we're in the middle of the transition and stuff like that, but there's really no change in terms of audit services, audit team, all our offices are staying in place, everyone's staying, so... all our offices are staying in place, everyone's staying, so, from, you know, your perspective, nothing changes other than the name on the door, and ultimately, the name on the, the audit report. Right, the invoice, the audit report next year.
Well, are your fees going up?
Yeah. We have done a bid on, for the town for a five-year period, so those are, those are set. For fiscal year '22, we did issue the reports under the Melanson name, but next year, they would be issued under the Markham name, so, just FYI there. Now, in terms of what I wanted to talk about tonight, you know, I figured we'd start by going through the 140-page document. Yeah, yeah.
Executive summary, please.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, just kidding, I just figured we have a brief conversation about the roles and responsibilities of the various parties that are involved in the audit process, including us as your independent auditors, management of the town, and the select board as well. And then we can briefly talk about some of the numbers in your financial statements, and talk a little bit about the management letter and single audit report, just from a brief overview standpoint. Just feel free to jump in at any point in time if you guys have any questions. Now, in terms of our responsibilities as your independent auditor, we are responsible for issuing an opinion on the town's financial statements. We're also responsible for planning and performing our audit to provide reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance, that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. An audit does not provide 100% assurance, an audit is not designed to discover or look for fraud. They may, that may happen as part of our audit procedures, but that's not what an audit is designed to do. We don't come in and pour through every single receipt that the town received, we don't look at every single invoice the town paid, or test and tie every pay rate that an employee has paid, things like that. Instead, our audits are conducted using a set of standards known as government auditing standards. They require that we perform certain types of analysis, certain types of testing, risk assessment procedures, things like that, but we don't come in and look at everything. That is not what we are here to do, and we would be here for the entire year if that was the case, so, no one wants us around that long. Now, in terms of management's responsibilities, management is ultimately responsible for the town's financial statements. We help the town prepare them, but the responsibility for what's included in them, and to make sure they're accurate and true, is on management. Management is also responsible for maintaining and establishing effective internal controls in the town, and ensuring that the town complies with the various laws and regulations that are applicable to all its activities. As part of the audit process, management is responsible for providing us with audit information in a timely fashion, to the best of their ability, when it's available, and at the end of the audit, providing us with a letter that confirms the various representations that were made to us during the audit. So, you know, they're confirming that the list of accounts receivable that was provided is true and accurate to the best of their knowledge, things along that nature. Now, in terms of your responsibilities as a select board, you are responsible for oversight over the entire process, which is why we're having this meeting here tonight. We can discuss any issues that might have arisen as part of the audit process, ask questions, things along that nature. You know, also as part of our audit process, we do meet with the town's audit committee multiple times during the fiscal year audit. We meet with them at the beginning of the audit process to discuss if there's any issues or concerns that we should be made aware of prior to the audit starting, kind of talk about the audit plan, procedures, timing, all that stuff. We meet with them once during the audit as well, to discuss how the audit's progressing, any issues we're running into, and then at the end of the audit, we have a very lengthy discussion about the financial statements, any issues that arose during the audit process, and have a, have a brief discussion about that as well. Now, in terms of the financial statements, the town doesn't just prepare a standard set of financial statements, they prepare an annual comprehensive financial report, also known as an ACFER. Now, the ACFER is essentially your set of financial statements preceded by an introductory section, and at the end of it is a statistical section. So, when you add all three of those together, it essentially doubles the size of your typical set of financial statements. The ACFER provides a great deal of information about the town, the town's operations, and boards and committees, the local economy, as well as a great deal of data on anything you can think of in terms of number of super lines, and, you know, things along that nature. It's really a great place to, if you're looking for information about the town, there's a lot of information in here, and it takes a good amount of time for the town to compile this every year, so, it is, it is a, it is a great document if you're looking for something to read. Now, the ACFER is required to be submitted by December 31st. We ran into issues in terms of getting some financial information for the audit, so we did request an extension, and it is due to be submitted by the end of this month. The whole process itself, after it's submitted, it takes about nine months for it to be reviewed. Typically, there's a team of about three people that review it, and provide feedback and comment after, after the submission is received. The town's previous five submissions of the ACFER were all certified, and the town received the certificate of achievement in financial reporting. And like I said before, it's really quite an accomplishment, there's a lot that goes into compiling 140-page documents, so, something to be proud of, and we anticipate this year will be no different in terms of receiving that award. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Tanya, I'll give you a break, you have two, two questions. The first one, I ask this every year.
Yes.
Have you had a chance to speak to the audit committee without any staff member, town employees present?
Yes, I did.
And, and, welcome to our audit committee.
Yep.
And, and the second, the second question I guess I'd ask is, do you have an approximation for how many test cases that you drew from? I know that the auditors generally say we're, you know, you don't look at every, every record, but approximately how many you looked at, and what percentage that may represent?
Well, it depends what we're looking at, so we perform tests of controls over your major transaction cycles, so your, your vendor dispersment cycle, and your payroll cycle, or your two main transaction cycles. So you process those on, you know, every week or every other week. We look at 40 vendor and 40 payroll as part of the regular audit process. We also look at additional tests, or additional samples during your federal grant audits, and those are more specific to the different grants that we're auditing themselves, which can vary. So we do end up looking at considerably more than the 40. Depending what else we're looking at, so we, we do tests of revenues, so we trace the revenues received to the actual reports from the state to make sure that everything's properly recorded and accounted for, for, you know, general state aid, circuit breaker money, school choice funds, you know, all those different kinds of things. So it depends on what we're actually looking at, what tests we're performing. Well, it's gonna vary in terms of what we look at, what percentage we look at. So I don't have an exact answer for that, for every single thing we do, but, you know, revenue is typically 67% and, and stuff like that, and we do different types of tests on different things, so.
Exactly. You know, we depend, at least I depend a lot on the appointed audit committee to go into the details, I know Josh, with your permission, maybe we can see if our audit committee chair has any...
Peter, please, go ahead.
Hello, everyone, my name is Matthew Shaw, I'm the chair of the audit committee, and...
Old information.
Just, just as Ms. Campbell mentioned, we do meet with the auditors multiple times throughout the year, so we, we meet with them during the planning stage to ensure that we have a good grasp of where the audit will go. We meet with them during the audit process a couple times, and we meet them, with them at the end, when the draft report is ready to review, which we did last week on the 10th. So we do go in-depth into the report, we do ensure every year that we have a chance to speak with the auditor directly, without town staff present, for the express purpose of finding out if they had unfettered access to the town's financial records. It's important to make sure that the auditor has access to all the records they need so that they can get an unvarnished and complete view of the town's finances, and we need to ensure that there's, that, there's that chance for the auditor to let us know if there's any issues. And of course, we asked that this year, and there, as it was reported to me, there were no issues getting that access, which is no surprise. And we ultimately reviewed the report, the committee reviewed it as a whole, and we voted to accept the report in draft form as it was given to us, and recommend that the select board accept it as well.
Thank you. Tom?
So, let's say the town has, we have several enterprise-type funds, and, and, so, does our audit committee, or do outside orders, do you see a receipt, like, from a bank, just to verify that if there's $20 million, that there's actually 20 million, or is it just more of a report from our town officers?
So, are you talking about in terms of cash that the town has?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we do, we get a schedule of all the town's bank accounts that are in control of the treasurer, we tie those out to her internal records. We also tie those to the general ledger to make sure that they agree, or if they don't agree, what, you know, sometimes there's reconciling items that are, that are different between them. So we review bank statements, we, we obtain bank confirmations directly from the bank to ensure that the balances that are reported to us for bank balances are accurate, and we also perform various tests of the reconciling items that they have, so, you know, deposits in transit, outstanding checks, we're looking at those as well to make sure that they're reasonable and accurate. Again, we don't look at every single one, but if it's a material balance, we do look at it and test it.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you. So, this is my first audit report, so I'm just curious, I, I don't have all the knowledge in terms of some of the previous deficiencies that we had in the town. Maybe we didn't, but I'm just wondering, are there any themes that kind of pop up still today that we're trying to address?
Right. No, the town is really good about addressing issues relatively quickly, so you don't see a lot of comments that are repeated from prior years. Last year, we didn't issue a formal management letter, this year we did. We did have some comments and recommendations based on our testing and, and observations. You know, we, we meet with the audit committee, we meet Paul to discuss those, and, and what the process is gonna be to correct those, and kind of when that's gonna happen. So typically, Paul would prepare a schedule of all the recommend, or the issues noted in the management letter, which you guys should have received a copy of as well, and then who's gonna address it, and how it's going to be addressed, and when it will be addressed by. Some can't change immediately or get addressed immediately, it takes a little time. Some, you know, you know, I know the issue that we reported in terms of the DPW and a change in procedures there, they've made that pretty much the day I was there, so, it's probably already been addressed. And then, as part of our planning meeting for the next year's audit, you know, we're required to follow up on those and, and see if they've been addressed, so we usually have our discussions then, where do things stand, and we, and we have to follow up on those during our audit process to, to see if what the town said they did, they actually did. So, all the comments in here are new this fiscal year, and I anticipate most of them will probably be addressed by the time we're doing next year's audit.
Great.
Right?
Correct.
So if those issues aren't addressed, does that become a finding or deficiency next year?
Yeah, it depends on how material of an issue it is. None of the issues that we noted in the management letter this year are material in nature in terms of, like, it's not a, a significant deficiency or material weakness in the town's internal control structure, it's just recommendations for improvement at this point in time. Obviously, if some of those things continue on, that might be a different issue, or don't get addressed. If it doesn't get addressed, we typically just repeat it next year in the management letter as a prior year issue, and then the town has a chance to respond as well, in terms of how they're gonna address it.
Is it, is it Melanson, or Markham, who does the, 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 looks at our liabilities, our pension, long-term employee, and when are those next due? Those actuarial studies next due to be updated? Because I know our big ones have always been our pension liability and our OPEB liability.
Right. So, the OPEB liability, we don't do the actual actuarial evaluations, we do look at them and, and test them as part of our audit. Fiscal year '22 was a roll-forward year, so I believe, I don't think it was a new valuation. You're still required to get an update every year from your actuaries, so they're still kind of recalculating the numbers on a yearly basis. You just don't submit a complete data, data set to them. That is due next fiscal year, because it's every other year, I believe. And the pension liability, that was, let me see, that was a new valuation in the fiscal '22 audit. They're a calendar year-end, so it was their December 31st, '21, had a new valuation. So those are new numbers, again, they, they need to have an update on the in-between years too, but they're only required to have a new valuation every other year. You know, that, that liability decreased by $9 million this past year for the town, basically because the...
The stock market went up.
Stock market went up like crazy in '21, so, I mean, that was consistent across the board with every, you know, town we're looking at, it's part of a pension. Next year might not be look so good, so, you know, it's gonna, kind of ebbs and flows a little bit there. You know, they were 50% funded last year, they were 60% funded this year, so that was good for them. But we haven't seen 12, 31, 22 numbers yet, so. But yeah, they have a new valuation every other year, and a new OPEB every other year, which, you know, they changed the assumptions kind of on a yearly basis to align with kind of what's going on in the market the best they can, too, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Josh, if there's nothing else, I'd like to just hear from Paul, who's got one, one foot in, one foot out in this audit, just on your perception of, you know, perspective of, of this year's audit relative to past year's audits, and give you a chance to comment.
I mean, I think the process was relatively the same as it has in the past. You know, what's good over this year, over maybe the last couple of years, is there was more onsite work, which was obviously related to COVID in the years past. You know, the only other thing that I say, you know, as far as the report, Tanya was mentioning, you will get a report, it is not done yet, refers to the management letter, it was known as the Audit Correction Report. And, you know, that will, you know, have the issues addressed for you, who's responsible for correcting them, a timetable for which they're corrected, and then an update. So I will have that probably to you by mid-February. That normally goes to you initially, and then will go to you at least once or twice, you know, during, during the fiscal year as far as updates are concerned. You know, it'll be shared with the audit committee also. But, you know, other than that, what is, what is nice about having Melanson is it's a lot of the same faces every year, you know, there's not a lot of changeover in their staff, which is very beneficial, you get to know the people a little bit, and, you know, and, you know, there are some firms out there that, you know, it's a changeover every year, except maybe the top, the top brass, so, you know, that's very helpful in dealing with them also. Other than that, it was, it was relatively standard, you know, from years past. I mean, they've been with us six, seven years now, six years?
So being six, six years, yeah.
So, you know, they're, they're in line for a couple more, so, anticipate moving forward, kind of hopefully don't bump into any major or deals in the future. You know, the management letter is written, I'll describe them as more of the recommendations. I, I reached out to every department head who was basically mentioned in the management letter, and they all responded to me very quickly, and very affirmatively, that the issues will be taken care of. And again, so that will be outlined and summarized for you folks, you know, probably your, maybe your first meeting, and first or second meeting in February.
Thank you. And finally, Tom, you want, every year, it seems that, you know, the Financial Standards Board comes up with something, something new, and so I guess...
Been on a roll lately, yes, I am.
So, so I guess the question is, what's, what do you see in the next year that may impact the way we do things, or the way you're auditing us?
Yeah, that's a good question. So this year, we were required to implement GASB '87. So GASB is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, they're the ones that set the rules and requirements for what we have to, to report in the financial statements, which required us, the, the new accounting standard this year required us to book leases, so lease receivables and lease payables, if the town had any. And there is, there is some in there, not a major change. Next year, there's another standard that's kind of similar to it, but won't... to it, but won't probably apply to the town quite as much. It applies more to bigger cities in terms of renting out stadiums and parking lots and things like that, accounting softwares and all those fun things. There is an exposure draft out there for a whole new financial accounting, financial reporting model, it's called, which has been delayed, thankfully, due to COVID for a few years now. But it might change how the entire financial statements are presented. So, I'm really excited about that one.
And finally, do you have any comments about Munis, which is our financial system we're fully and wholly, totally dependent upon? Is it doing what you would like it to do as a, as an auditor? And, and I guess that's a, is a most open-ended question I can.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, Munis is a great system. It's probably one of the best municipal accounting systems you can get. There are a million different features and integrations and stuff you can utilize with Munis. So.
We use about one, one hundredth of the
Probably, and most places do. I mean, most cities and towns are not, you know, pushing the bell there with, with technology. But I would definitely explore, like, what other options are out there in terms of scanning invoices, documents, keeping everything paperless. You know, they do a lot of, you know, you could connect, what are they called? Modules? So, like, they can talk to each other in different ways and might cut down on some of the paperwork or the approvals and things like that. So, it's definitely worth exploring. I know they're, you know, they, like everyone else in the world, has been short-staffed in terms of people at Munis and trainings and stuff like that. But it would be worth looking into what other features it offers and what, what else you could kind of do with it. But it is a great system. It does, it does a lot, does a lot more than most cities and towns need.
Is there a process by which your firm can, because you, you do multiple communities and towns, can look at, you know, what modules of Munis, Long Meadow, could benefit from using? I mean, that's not part of an audit
Right.
per se, but it certainly is part of something that could help, you know, we don't know what we don't know
Right.
or we're not using.
Yeah, and it might be worth
Maybe some of the audit committee can talk to
Yeah.
Melanson, you know, Markham about in terms of what it is that, because, like you said, Munis is everything to everybody, and we just use it
Right. Right. Yeah, and it might be worth reaching out to Munis too and just seeing what other modules they have. I don't know.
That's just a sales pitch.
I know. No, but it might be worth at least starting that conversation with them to see and see what they say, and then we could have discussions about it. But, and what the town's really comfortable doing. But yeah.
Excellent.
Certainly.
A couple of comments I think are worth considering. One, so Paul mentioned the Audit Correction Report that, that will be created to deal with any comments that come along with the audit and the management letter. The audit committee makes a point of reviewing how that's going along and ensuring that, that those comments are both addressed and that progress is made in addressing them. That's what we do in the off-period before the next audit committee, the next audit planning session will begin in early fall, basically, in July.
Yeah, June, July.
We have that six-month period where we will meet with Paul, when he's had a chance to actually address them and discuss how that's moving forward so that the town continues to be able to report that those things have been addressed. The other comment I think is worth mentioning to the, to the board would be, we have won that certificate of achievement from the GFOA six years in a row, five years in a row for two reasons. One, the folks at, at Markham now do a good job, and they've, they've made a concerted effort to ensure that all the information gets in there. But that information, the audit they perform, is only as good as the information they get from our finance department. So, it's to Mr. Pesterzak and his staff's credit that the audit continues to be awarded from the GFOA. With that in mind, I know that Paul's with us on an interim basis now, and we're lucky to have him. The town, I know, is looking to find a new finance director, and I know that that process is ongoing. The point I'm trying to make is it's in our interest to ensure that we get a very, the very best we can and make sure that that position is filled with someone who's fully capable of meeting all the demands that Paul meets now. And of course, his institutional knowledge will take time to develop. But our audit goes well because we have quality people in place, and I would encourage the board to continue to search for someone who can meet those needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the draft audit report.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down.
No problem.
Nice to see you.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you too. Take care.
Any chance you'd be interested in our CFO position?
I have a lot on my plate right now. Yeah.
That's in addition to what you're already doing, I think.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely. I have four kids, so I don't have time for that.
Congratulations getting out of the house.
Yeah. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the proposed SWM code updates for stormwater MS4 permit, which might be Latin. Is Corinne?
Yep, I'm moving in Corinne now.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Corinne.
Hi. So, I'm here today to talk to you about the stormwater management code updates, which we will be putting on the draft town meeting warrant for this upcoming annual town meeting. The, I'm just pulling up the agenda here so I can see exactly how it was worded. The stormwater management codes are, the purpose of proposing storm updates to the stormwater management code, which we have in several different general bylaws in addition to some zoning code and the subdivision rules and regulations, is to bring the town into compliance with the MS4 permit. So, in case you are not aware, the MS4 permit stands for the Massachusetts, sorry, the municipal separate storm sewer system. So, that's M and then four S's, MS4 permit. And that's a federal permit that's managed by EPA, and each state that is governed by the MS4 has their own terms that pertain to that permit. So, in Massachusetts, the EPA has delegated, or sorry, has, has given delegation of the permits to MassDEP. So, all this to say that the MS4 permit code standards are federal in nature, and it's the EPA who's really the authority on them. In Massachusetts, we work with DEP to come into compliance with the, with the permit. But the, the overall permitting comes from EPA. So, in 2016, the Massachusetts MS4 permit was updated. There was the, before that, there was the 2003 version, of which Long Meadow was a permutee. We are also a permutee of the 2016 version. The state and federal government determine jurisdictional areas based off of criteria such as like density development, contiguous area of impervious cover. And so, some towns in our area are designated MS4 permits, and then other towns in our, in our region might not be. Long Meadow is. So, the MS4 permit is what allows us to discharge our stormwater through our stormwater system. That's the MS4 system, the pipes underground connected to the catch basins into waters of the US. It's what allows us to do that. So, the MS4 permit governs water quality and water quantity going into those receiving waters of the US. In our case, the Connecticut River ultimately. And our MS4 permit in Massachusetts and all of the New England states is really designed, or most of the area of New England that drains the Long Island Sound is really designed to protect the ecological conditions in the Long Island Sound. So, what we're designated for in response specifically to the conditions that the Long Island Sound is receiving. So, all of that is context for what I'm bringing to you today. We have in our current code several bylaws and the general bylaws that govern stormwater. So, the first chronologically is chapter, Article 6, Chapter 600 on IDDE, which is illicit discharge and illicit discharge detection and elimination. That's IDDE. There is also Article 6, Chapter 700, which is the erosion incentive and control bylaw that governs stormwater management during construction projects and development projects. And then there's Chapter 800, which is our stormwater management bylaw, which governs post-construction stormwater management. So, those are the systems that are designed by the project designer and the developer to manage stormwater after the development has already been completed and into the future. So, those might be like detention basins, underground infiltration centers, you know, the catch basins are all part of that, et cetera. So, those are what's in the general bylaws. Also, the wetlands control bylaw does manage some stormwater issues that pertain to jurisdictional areas around wetlands. And then, as I said before, portions of the zoning code that regulate design standards for development also touch on stormwater erosion incentive control as in subdivision rules and regulations. So, this permit was updated in 2016. It was held in court for a couple of years with legal stays due to challenges. And then, a couple of years ago, EPA was given the go-ahead to start enforcing the code, implementing and enforcing the code. So, at this point, 2023, we are in the years where we need to be meeting the code requirements that are phased in and reporting to EPA that we're doing so. We are not unlike other communities across the state and in our region. We are behind where we should be in terms of implementing the MS4 permit. There's a lot of different types of requirements, but what we're talking about here specifically is, is the updating of the code so that our standards for development and those types of stormwater management is in compliance with the code. The DPW has been working diligently on other permit aspects, which I'm not really that equipped to talk about, but include things like streets, weekends, catch basin cleaning, et cetera. So, in order to come into compliance, we hired the Pioneer Value Planning Commission Fee-for-Service Project, and Tim Keen, the town engineer, and myself have been working with Pioneer Value Planning Commission, mostly Patty Gamburini, to take a look at all the different chapters of the general code and zoning code that I just mentioned, and really work through them and see where, where we are currently out of compliance with the 2016 permit, what we need to do, how the language needs to change, how our standards need to change to come into compliance. And then, we're also, so, so that's all to come into compliance with the 2016 permit to avoid any sort of punitive action by DEP or EPA. We also took the opportunity to take a holistic view about how our current permitting works in town in regards to development, so stormwater permitting through the DPW, but also our site designer view through the planning board, and really see where, where are there opportunities to improve the communication between departments? Does the code make it clear to potential applicants, development applicants, that they have maybe two or three different permit, permitting processes that they have to go through? Is it clear what those, what triggers those different permitting processes, what the standards are, et cetera? So, that's a separate aspect of the recommendations that you will see in this code is, so the first being the, the ones that we need to do to come into compliance with the MS4 permit that are either verbatim from the MS4 permit, or they are directly checking off requirements stated by the MS4 permit. And then, the second, the second type of recommendations that you will see in this code, or the proposed revisions to the code, are the sort of procedural recommendations that don't come from the MS4 permit themselves, but are the results of DPW and myself working with our planning consultant, PVPC, to sort of figure out how to, how to make this process more streamlined and more elegant, both on the town side and for an applicant. So, the, Mike Barbieri sent you the Word document versions of these documents, all of the different chapters of the general bylaws that I mentioned, and also the wetlands, including the wetlands control bylaw, and I think there was, let me just unflline this back up again, there was one, oh, and a cover sheet that explains the process. The, the Word versions have the recommendations at the track change level, and they also have comments pulled off to the side. So, the recommendations at the track change level are ready, from the town staff point of view, town engineer and myself, are ready for adoption. They're written in the same language that the bylaws are, and they, those are currently under review by our town council. And they're the result of this process, the working group process that I've mentioned. The comments pulled off to the side, we have kept in there to try and explain, make it really clear to you what the origin is of the recommendations. So, if it's coming directly from the MS4 permit, or if it's the result of in-depth conversation between town staff, et cetera. So, the goal here tonight is just me to introduce this project to you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. On February 6th, we will see this on the agenda again. We are having a joint meeting of the select board and the planning board. I've already introduced the zoning portion of this to the planning board. So, on February 6th, Patty Gamburini from PVPC will be presenting to both you and the planning board in a joint meeting, the whole process as to this. And she's able to, she's done this for so many communities in our area, and also sounds several statewide working groups for how to help municipalities incorporate these standards into their code. So, she's able to answer a lot of technical questions and what she's seeing statewide. I, at the risk of, or to avoid overwhelming you, I'll sort of leave it there. And if you have any questions for me now, happy to answer them about the process. I'm able to answer probably a lot of questions too about the MS4 permit itself, but if there's anything too technical, I will ask you, or I'll let you know, and you can hold off until Tim Keen and Patty Gamburini can join us at the February 6th meeting.
Corinne, thank you for your work on this. I guess my big question is, what is the risk to the town if these don't go through? I don't see why they wouldn't, but what is the downside of being non-compliant?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, what, what's the downside of not being in compliance?
So, the downside of not being in compliance is that we are liable to receive, you know, fines from DEP slash EPA for, for not being in compliance here. The, it's a little bit, that's something that Patty's going to be able to speak to more broadly than I am able to, given her statewide work on this project, or on this work, working all these communities into compliance. It's, it's difficult right now to look back over the past, so this was a 2016 permit that was held up in court until 2018, or 2019, I believe. And those were the Trump years, and Trump's administration was not going to enforce this permit anyway. So, now, now we're in a different administration who has made it clear that it is a priority to enforce MS4 permit. And so, there's, there's a little bit of a lack of history due to the fact that the EPA, it was not a priority for the EPA to be going after communities that were not coming into compliance with the permit up until very recently. So, I personally don't know of any that have faced, faced any punitive measures or fines. That being said, one of the staff members of PVPC, who is actually, who has left them in the interim, she was working on this project for a while with us, and she was telling Tim and I that she does know of communities out in Eastern Mass who have received fines. I don't know in what order they're in, or the mag, the order of magnitude that they're in. Another, you know, potential issue could be that, you know, we apply to DEP for grants all the time, and so if we, if we are not showing our due efforts, there's no guarantee that they will or will not take our coming into compliance with a permit that they manage into consideration. But I think it's, you know, something that's reasonable to, for us to be thinking about. The last thing that I'll point out is that, criteria of the MS4 permit aside, one of the, well, one of the, one of the major components of the MS4 permit that we look to when we are updating our code here, or when we're making suggestions to update our code, is that it's really trying to push low-impact development. And I don't know how familiar each of you are with that term in particular, but the, the way that we use that with stormwater management is that it's trying to push better site design where design standards are calling for disconnection of impervious surface. So, not just like one whole page law for disconnection of a pervasive surface. So not just like one whole page lot, but really only paving the necessary areas of lot, reducing the volume and the speed of water that's coming into the storm drain systems, including more vegetation where possible, so that water's allowed to infiltrate. And cooler water comes into the system that's not just running on hot asphalt that has no shade or no vegetation cover. There's a lot of benefits to low-impact development that are directly in alignment with the 2021 votes, I think the full town meeting, for the town to consider climate change and everything it does. And so this is an opportunity, whether or not the MS4 permit is calling for many of the things that you will see are recommended in the zoning code, which isn't shared on this agenda, that wasn't part of this agenda packet, but is available for public viewing through the planning board, are the result of the MS4 regulatory review of barriers to low-impact development in our site and design review process, for example, or in our zoning code. And so our altering that language to at least allow low-impact development, if not require low-impact development, both checks the box of the MS4 permit, but it also checks the box of so many things that we've heard people talk about at that town meeting. For example, when the zone change question came up for the church, and we heard people standing up and say, why, why are we seeing this big parking lot here? Where are the trees, et cetera? It really touches on a lot of those different topics. Which we're not directly, you know, voted on at town meeting, but we have heard interest in. So that's the long answer to your short question.
Thanks, Corinne. Mark?
Yeah, Corinne, thank you for doing this. You know, I'll start out by telling you that we need to do something differently from what we did a year ago when we brought up a water project, because my sense is, these are going to go across, come across in a similar manner. And, you know, I'm not predicting where they'll go, but they're very complex, and people just don't like change in the town of Long Meadow. So I don't, I think need to do something. But I have a bunch of comments that I just wanted to pass along to you, because my sense is that, pardon the expression, but these modifications were all done by bureaucrats, and we're in a town that's managed through a town meeting form of government. And people are going to have comments, whether it's the planning board or the select board. And one solution, the most, even the most appropriate technical solution, may not, may not work well. And I'll give you a few examples. In the chapter 600, section six dash 606, it lists prohibitive activities. My sense is, because it's highlighted as changes, it's going to draw some attention. And the reason it's going to draw attention is because there are things in there that are pre-existing conditions, if you will, or pre-existing configurations that appear to be outlawed. And people are going to say, does that mean I've got to spend money to do such and such to come into compliance? And so I think that's a real concern, and people are going to express a concern. And I think we need to look at that, whether they're gutters, or sump pumps, or whatever it is that people have that tie into these things, because under this rule, they'd be prohibited, and I think that's a problem. In the chapter 800, proposals, section six dash eight oh seven, rules and regulations, this, the section gives authority to the DPW director to, to, you know, enforce this and make regulations. I think that's, that's probably appropriate in a city, but not necessarily in a town like Long Meadow that we run a town meeting. I don't know whether we want to, you know, how we want to do it, but it's a bylaw, and if we're going to edit or exempt things from bylaws, I don't think that that's delegated to a, to a town employee. And so we ought to look at that more closely in the context of a town with town meeting form of government, and not a city, because I think it's, it's going, it's important that we not necessarily give the DPW director the authority to, to implement rules. Similarly, in section, section six dash eight oh eight, the DPW director has the authority to grant waivers from a bylaw. It would seem to me that it ought to be, in our town, maybe it's the conservation commission, or maybe it's the planning board, whoever oversees this, rather than the DPW director. You know, again, that's part of the town meeting, rather than what I'll call an elected town form of government. You ought to take another look at that. Finally, section six dash eight ten, enforcement. It's interesting, the whole thing says the DPW director can enforce, they have no means of enforcing this unless there's, there's something better than that. This, this whole system becomes unenforceable if nothing else. And, and, you know, we are now implementing a code enforcement, and I think in individuals in the town of Long Meadow, I think if we're going to do that, then the enforcement of this bylaw ought to be consistent with the other things we're trying to do. Instead of saying the DPW director can enforce it, we ought to put it back where it belongs with our code enforcement group. So those are just some of the comments that I looked through that, that concern me, because I, you know, I think people are going to look at those as they jump out.
Yeah, I think those are, you bring up a good point, Mark, in that this, these are really, there's a lot of proposed edits, especially in the general bylaws, especially chapter 800, the whole format of that is proposed to be changed. And so there's a lot of proposed changes, both in terms of like just literal lines that have been edited, but then also the criteria and standards. I, I think we need to have some information sessions just solely on this question. And also, one of the things that I saw Lynn do at the last town meeting, where the general code questions were, literally go through and make a spreadsheet that explained what every single proposed change was and why it was being proposed. I'd like to address something like that as well. One, I, I understand your, what you're saying in terms of the DPW director's authority. In some cases, the original bylaw, the DPW is already the authority, so that's not being changed. In other, in other, in other cases, in our original bylaw, sometimes the select board is the authority. And so in those cases, we have proposed changing it to the DPW director for consistency. And because the DPW director, and the DPW director's team are really the technical experts, so I don't disagree that there's an inherent tension between, in a town meeting form of government, having an elected body, you know, being an authority is a difference, is maybe more usual and maybe more palatable to some people than having a staff person or a department head be the authority. That being said, I think that there's plenty of town meeting communities in our region who have had it set up in a very similar way. And so it's not undoable. Another thing that I think we really have to stress to the residents, any residents who would be potentially concerned about the proposed revisions to these bylaws and how it affects them, chapter six, chapter 600, IDDE aside, the only projects that are triggering these new standards are projects that disturb an acre or more of land. So that does not apply to almost any homeowners, right? Unless, unless they are truly digging up their whole front yard, in which case, yes, we probably do want to make it so that they can't, you know, their, their whole front yard, every time it rains, isn't, you know, dumping sediment into the catch basin right outside of their home during, while they're, while they're under construction. If they're doing, you know, like a minor addition to their yard, or if they're, you know, putting in a big garden or something like that, this isn't going to trigger any of these standards. It's really meant for developments, industrial, institutional and commercial developments.
Well, Tom, Corinne, if that's the case, that, I mean, my understanding is, there might be one or two residential properties in town that are greater than an acre.
That's it?
I don't, there aren't, residential, there aren't that many. But, you know, I think it ought to be stated that upfront, and if it was, I missed it, that this does not apply to, you know, I mean, no, our, our current standard is three-quarters of an acre, right, for a residential property. And I think if you go along room five, there may be some one-acre properties, but there's not many besides, I mean, that, that'd go a long way toward people saying, okay, it's not going to impact me, it's going to impact the, you know, the next medical building that goes in on Dwight Road, or, you know, somebody redevelops the church, or whatever it is. And that, you know, right now, we're looking maybe at, at the William Street property or something like that. But I think that goes a long way toward getting the people who need to approve this to say, okay, I can, I can approve it with a good conscience.
So the, sorry, just, just the, the applicability section, so I forgot, I don't actually have Microsoft Word on my home computer, so I'm not able to open this in the redline, in the redline version while I'm talking to you. I apologize for that. But the authority section of the proposed, so in the proposed documents, chapters 700 and 800 have been combined. So you now have chapter 800, which is the bylaw, and then the proposed regulations to go along with the bylaw. So the applicability section of that document should state the one-acre criteria. It is not formulated to state what kind of use is triggered the, triggered the bylaw. Like, it wouldn't say residential doesn't trigger, but commercial does. That, that could, it is true that in some communities around us, they do just, they, they say, single-family homes will never trigger this bylaw. So if it turns, you know, that, that is, that is an option, which Patty can speak to more at the group where it exists, if that's something that's of interest. But the, the one acre itself should be stated pretty front and center.
Yeah, and it is, section, I'm looking at six dash eight oh four, and it says one acre or more. It does say.
One acre or more. Yeah, but that, that's something that we would put front and center, you're right, on any sort of, you know, when we do a video for the, sort of like explanation documents for the, for the more articles.
Tom, I know you had a comment, but just one point on that, under the end of applicability, it says that projects disturbing less than one acre but discharging directly or indirectly to municipal storm drain system. So what would that, what would that entail?
I'm sorry, because I don't have it in front of me, can you just read the whole clause? Or that whole?
It says, and note that, note that projects disturbing less than one acre but discharging directly or indirectly to the municipal storm drain system must meet low-impact development performance standards as described in the rules and regulations promulgated hereunder in order to minimize flows to the municipal storm drain system.
Yeah, so discharging directly, this is something where we might want Tim to elucidate at the next meeting, but discharging directly, in my understanding, means that there's no sort of pretreatment before, before it's discharging. So in a, that may look like, if there was, let's say that there's a development where there's a parking lot, and there's a storm drain right in the parking lot, and the whole property drains to that storm drain. And they're disturbing less than an acre. Let's say they're repaving a half acre of the parking lot or something like that, and it's all going directly to that storm drain. And the storm drain itself doesn't have one of those, you know, there's nothing in between the stormwater and the storm drain that's slowing it down or cleaning it, as there is in, like, most modern storm systems, where there's like at least, I don't know what the systems are called, but there's something that separates the oil, for example, or like tries to separate the sediment, where the sediment sinks down. And then, so that all that storm, dirty stormwater, full of sediment, et cetera, is just piped directly into our storm sewer system, and then it's traveling down that tunnel into Cooley Brook, let's say, and then directly into the Connecticut River from there. As opposed to a parking lot of the same size, where there is one of those oil separators, or there's like an underground infiltration chamber, where it's like, you know, going in and it's at least being slowed down, and the sediment is falling out a little bit before it goes into the same pipe system.
It could be as simple-
That's my interpretation of that.
Corinne, I was just going to add, it could be as simple as a residential sump pump system, discharging inappropriately directly onto the street flowing into our stormwater system. So it's just something as minor as that, or somebody draining their pool.
Right. Which we have a lot of.
Good job. First chapter 800.
When you were talking about less than an acre, if you, I don't have that one up in front of me.
Yeah, I think you're right on it, you know, that that's a sort of a violation or concern, that it's going right into the mainstream. I, I've been to homes in town where, you know, the basement seems to be, the water seems to be seeping in and affecting the foundation. And when I go outside, you know, they have the downspout, and then there's a sidewalk, and then there's their neighbor's property. And so, you know, they'd be in a jam, you know, because they, hopefully, there's something in this that would help them, because there's no mention about what happens if you have a water situation that erodes and goes into another person's property. I didn't see anything about crossing boundaries. Is that, did you, is there anything in there that specifically addresses sort of handling your water issues in your own property, and not sort of let it become your neighbor's problem, because you build a ramp and it just flows into their property? I don't know if that's in there.
I mean, this is not, we're talking about a permit for, for work. That's not, that wouldn't apply to this, right, Corinne?
Well, if it's a violation-
This permit is for a land, it's certain-
You wouldn't be able to get a permit, but that's a different issue.
Well, it says any ongoing problem has to be solved. I saw that in here, if I'm correct. Am I correct that anything that's a ongoing situation, there's no, you know, you're not grandfathered in. If you have a problem, you have to solve it, right? That's what this is saying.
I'm a little bit lost where we are right now.
Well, I'm talking about 800.
Tom, where are you?
Well, there's, you know, we have four, for folks on TV, we have four documents that have a number of pages in them. So it's easy for us to get lost during the first discussion. But, you know, I did, so one thing is, it doesn't really talk about, it does talk about not altering, you know, drainage patterns, but if there's a drainage pattern that goes from one property into another property, I don't, I don't see where that's addressed. The other thing is that, you know, on our town symbol, we have a beaver, you know, and, and like, the beavers used to solve a lot of this problem, because in the, they would flood these areas and create these settling pools. And unfortunately, we don't have as many as we would, doing this work for us. But I also see this as opportunities, you know, Corinne, we're, you know, people in this town like to see us as a green community. And so one of the things that could be, you know, we could see, you know, promoting in a sense, is that, you know, we would have sort of settling ponds, and some of these creeks in towns, you know, would be developed in a way where, where to increase our, the amount of green in town, and, you know, settle water that is going into the Connecticut River in a way that it would come out cleaner. And, and this doesn't really address those sort of environmental approaches. I don't know, you know, I just think when we look at this issue, that somehow we should encourage that, you know, that there are, it's not just culverts and, and stuff like that, that we should really be looking at, if we're looking at a problem with pollution, then, you know, we should be looking at those, those creeks, and is there creative ways that we can be a greener community and not put silt into the river? And this document doesn't address any of that stuff.
Well, that, that's what 600 is for. So there's no, to not dump into, you can't dump into catch basins, you can't dump into the water supply.
Right. But the, the other thing is, you know, what are we going to do as a town, you know, with some of this water flow that just goes into these culverts, you know, not culverts, but into these dingles, and then, you know, it doesn't get addressed? And, I mean, eventually, we're going to be held responsible for those, too.
You are.
Yeah.
Definitely.
You know, and, and this doesn't address that at all.
Tom, I see that as, I, I think you are, you're absolutely right, and that it's a big issue. And it's a, it's a big issue that you sort of see when you're looking at the streams in the, in the Brooks. But it's not an issue that we, we talk about as much as like development, you know, you know, commercial development, or let's say. The, I, I think that the ways to address those, I think the concerns are related, and they tie into one another, but the- they tie into one another, but the, the way to address the water that is already going into the, uh, streams in the Brooks is more of a, um, that seems to me to be more of like a project related, uh, approach where we, we target areas that are in poor condition and maybe we have access to because it's on public land, let's say, or maybe there's some running through private areas, backyards, for example, that we know are a concern and maybe that we do target outreach to homeowners. The, what's in front of you right now is the storm water code that governs when somebody is going to develop or redevelop a property. So the, versus the existing conditions of the streams and the creeks, which is what I think you're referring to. So we, we can't legislate out the pollution that's already in the street, the, um, the creeks, the storm water that's going into those, um, areas right now is likely going in legally. It, it's legal that that's happening. Um, what this is doing, what the code, uh, the proposed code revisions would do right now is make it so that when any of those medical facilities, let's say, that, uh, shed storm water into catch basins that ultimately ends in Cooley Brook, um, uh, whenever they redevelop their parking lot, if they're ripping up more than an acre, they're gonna have to redevelop to a better standard that would then make the water going into Cooley Brook ultimately, uh, cleaner than it is now. So, um.
Yeah, I understand that.
I don't know that our general bylaws have a way to address the, the existing conditions of the streams and the creeks, that they have a way to sort of like make what the future discharge better, if that.
Well, I agree with that and I know that there's a lot of state regulations that look at new construction and that's what this is gonna support, which I agree with. But we're holding the residents of town accountable, uh, for their storm water runoff and we should hold the town accountable. We could have a section in here that says, the, the storm water enterprise fund is gonna be used in some of these areas to, you know, provide ways to, to clean water in these runoffs like, you know, Cooley Brook or Raspberry Brook or, or whatever Brook it is, that the town is gonna use our storm water money to, you know, do some water improvement in those areas. I don't see why that can't be part of this. This is a pretty lengthy document and it doesn't hold the town accountable for these public areas, which, you know, no one owns. I mean, they're the, the creeks are the towns, basically, you know? And I think we should have something in here, at least saying that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna address some of this and we have an enterprise fund that will allow us to have projects like this. I'm not saying we need to commit ourselves to a project right now, but I'm saying that there are, you know, we, we started this enterprise fund for projects like this, you know, anything that has to do with storm water and meeting these regulations and I don't see why it can't be in this document.
You mean like a water treatment plant on the Brooks? I, I, I just don't follow what you mean.
I'm saying that there are ways to, you know, settling ponds. They talk about, and they mentioned, uh, rain gardens. So you'd get a place where the, the rain would collect in this garden and it wouldn't flow in anything. And, but there are creeks and there's ways to, like beavers would build dams and they had these settling ponds and that would actually clean the water quite a bit. Um, humans can do something like that. There are interventions for runoff that will, um, because we've had folks here talk to us about it. And, and, um, and I think we should hold the town responsible to, to put that into our future. Um, you know, it's not all homeowners' responsibilities.
Uh, Corinne, I wanted to mention something, it's something you said before made me think of something. You said if, uh, industrial or commercial business wants to repave an acre of its lot, it'll, it'll have to follow the new standards. Um, do we want to have all industrial projects or commercial projects have to follow this and then the one acre, uh, applied to residential and so that every commercial project just happens to be nine tenths of an acre? Or is that, am I overthinking it?
Uh, that's a great question and that's actually at the town's, it's at our discretion. So the, the one acre, I should have mentioned, it is the threshold identified by the MS4 permit. So we could say any, any square footage of less than one acre is our trigger, um, or our threshold. Uh, we, we aren't allowed to say anything bigger than an acre, so that the acre is the, um, maximum, uh, trigger for that, uh, for these, um, triggering these higher level standards. So in our working group, um, we did talk about the, the benefits of having sort of different sizes, different triggers to trigger different levels of administrative review. So could there be a lesser trigger where, um, let's say it's half an acre, um, where a, a potential, like a development applicant triggers that smaller amount, they don't have to go through the full, uh, land disturbance permit application to DPW, but they do have to go through like the equivalent of a preliminary meeting where they sit down with the DPW director and talk about the low impact development standards and how their projects can meet it and what the, you know, DPW director would like to see, um, as opposed to needing to literally meet every single standard that's delineated in the one acre threshold. Um, we, uh, ultimately decided not to include that in this version, um, both for simplicity's sake and also because, um, we didn't, we, to Mark Holt's point earlier, we know, we're sensitive to the fact that this will likely be controversial in some circles and, um, we didn't want to seem more, um, uh, what's the word, more, uh, bureaucratic than, than necessary. Um, it's, Agawam is a great example of, of community that has done that sort of two-level process where if, if a project, I think that they've exempted residents, so, uh, single family residential entirely, but then if any other property triggers a square footage threshold, they have to meet with the planning department and the DPW department, meets the design standards for low impact development, but not necessarily the, um, like the nutrient removal standards that are part of the, the full acre, um, permit.
Okay. And Sarah, we're gonna have this in a few weeks. Has anybody got anything else for now?
No, I, well, I, I just think that we need to consider some of the things we heard tonight because, uh, Corinne, I, I just, my perception is what we see here is gonna come back before us on February 7th and, and, you know, we've, you've heard a lot of comments. I think the, the biggest thing was your comment that said, gee, the town of Agawam exempted their residential properties. You know, why wasn't that considered for Long Meadow? And who in Long Meadow gets a chance to say we'd like that as part of this? Because otherwise, this is gonna come back and I, you know, it, it's just not gonna go anywhere. If we need this to pass, we need to make it palatable.
So, yes, the last thing that I'll say is that, you know, we did have to, we had to make some decisions in the working group because we couldn't bring every single question before you to the select board.
But the problem is, Corinne, and I apologize in advance for this, but, but the, the working group didn't include the residents and the people who vote. You know, they're literally, you know, people who are experts at the PVPC, you know, you and people who are doing this on a theoretical basis. You know, when you hear the alternatives, like what Agawam's done, like what other cities have done, like the discussion we've had here for the last 45 minutes, you know, there are alternatives and I think those alternatives need to come, at least be considered in the town of Long Meadow, because if we go forward with what we've got now, it's not gonna go well. And, and, and yet we have ways of knowing we need to do this and we, I think we can make this happen in the town of Long Meadow by, by utilizing, if you will, the best applications of, of RSS4, or MS4 permitting systems. And, and I'm not convinced that this has done it based on the group we had put it together. I would have been much, you know, more comfortable had members of a conservation commission or the planning board or others sat down to do this, but it was done in a closed room with people from the PVPC who were, were working in, in theory and that's just not gonna pass in our town meeting, I, I fear.
If I could address that just quickly, um, this, this is professional staff that worked on something that had already been developed and took, uh, standards that had changed since it had been passed and are bringing it to you for this initial discussion. So this is not considered a done deal. It doesn't have to go to annual town meeting, it could go to the fall town meeting, but this is that process where no one is circumventing anything, no one is trying to present something at a town meeting, um, that is going to seem bureaucratic or overly restrictive when it doesn't need to be. Um, but I, I, I take issue with the behind closed doors because it implies that we're trying to do something that isn't appropriate or is secretive and that's absolutely not what's happening. This is a public meeting with a public conversation, um, with professional staff that had prevent, presented, um, a, a first discussion on this, that will have consultants and additional professional staff at the next meeting for a further discussion. Um, so I, I, I just wanted to correct that because I, I think it does place an unfair light on, um, on it, on it being something it wasn't.
I accept your comments, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Lynn, I really appreciate you saying that and, and Corinne, thanks so much for all your work, um, on this, um, really appreciate it. Um, I actually called Lynn today because I was freaking out. I said, Lynn, there's a lot, there's a lot of information here. Um, this is my first time going through this, so I, I wanted to make sure, we expected that this was something that we were actually voting on today. Uh, Lynn assured me that, no, this is a first pass, so I can appreciate Mark's concerns. Um, you know, certainly valid. I think going in front of town meeting on anything that deals with water, sewer, uh, big issues like this, um, we definitely need to vet it out before we present this to the town. So, um, with that being said, I just, I appreciate your comments Lynn, because I, I do think this, a lot of people worked really hard on this to get it in front of us as a first pass, so, um, I think we'll make a, a better document before we, we put this in front of the town. So, thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, Lynn, I, I appreciate you speaking up on this. I, I think it's definitely a lot of work and it's, it's very thorough and of course, you know, our job is to pick it apart, unfortunately. Sorry, Corinne, you know, that's our job, you know, the people vote, vote us in so that we can make sure that, uh, these things are discussed thoroughly and we try to see all the different angles and, um, because I do, I think there are some folks out there that have, they know they have water problems. They know this is, my sump pump is going in the wrong place and, and it would be nice if we could offer ways to remedy some of these situations and help, help homeowners out rather than them feel like they're being cornered, you know? Because I think there's a lot of, um, cleanup, like you say, new construction sites and permitting and all that stuff. You know, that's a big emphasis and, but what I think we wanna help homeowners and we wanna help the public lands, um, you know, the runoff on all the, uh, creeks and, and in the dingles and, uh, and I think we should, the town should be held accountable also. Um, and the other thing is I didn't get to say is Mark's point about, um, you know, having some other boards or committees involved in the discussion, um, to grant exemptions. And I, I think, you know, we may, maybe part of this would be come up with some sort of a new committee that would look at, uh, you know, water runoff issues and, uh, it could have, you know, homeowners in, involved in that committee that they'd try to find reasonable solutions so that, um, you know, people own fine, like, gee, I bought this house, it has this problem, I'm gonna be mandated to re, to remedy it and it's gonna cost me a ton of money and I didn't see it coming and the town isn't offering many of the solutions. And hopefully we could be a, a place to offer some solutions also. Um, so.
Um, I do wanna correct, I think, um, when I was commenting on the storm, um, the sump pump thing, I believe that my statements are not, do not apply to the section that Josh is referring to. This was for land disturbance. Um, and I think Corinne was trying to correct me on that, but, um, I think I misunderstood exactly what section you were talking about.
Right. We were just talking about 800 at that point, 600?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair, just, Lynn, can she just remind everybody, we are having a joint meeting with two elected boards of planning.
Yes, we understand, yeah.
She should remind that of the public.
We understand.
We already, we already mentioned that.
Uh, we'll make sure it's clear, because Tom is bringing up comments about.
My, my disconnect, my, my response was based on, this is called, title on our agenda is proposed SWM code updates. It doesn't say draft, it doesn't say first pass, it doesn't say, it says, this is the proposal, Lynn, and that's what I was reacting to.
This is recommended updates, I, that's what it says on the sheets.
Well, it, it's.
Not on the, the agenda title.
What I'm saying is, as I read through it, it, even the cover letter said, we've developed, I mean, I can read it to you, I'm, I'm, I, I understand what you're saying, Lynn, and I accept it, but it says the PVPC staff completed the work in, in close consultation with the town of Long Meadows Assistant Town Administrator, okay? And the following is the list of deliverables under the project, then it lists everything. I mean, I, I just took this as, here it is, you know, and this is what, what's going forward.
But they all say recommendations and we don't, we never have to take what comes before us.
Fine. I, I, I accept that, Josh and I understand it now, but it's, it was not initially clear. That's all.
Okay. All right, uh, let's move on to the request for zone change. Um, do we have anyone from Pun Realty, Pun Long Meadow Realty?
We do.
Oh, thank you, Corinne.
I don't know how to, I don't know how to exit this like presenter mode here, so I'm just gonna wait for my.
Mike will give you the boot. Have a great night, Corinne.
Thank you.
It's gonna get better after this.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, hi Diana.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Diana Pun and I've got G A Olenor Wadu next to me and we are representing Pun Long Meadow Realty, um, the request for a zone change. Um, I'm happy to share my screen in regards to the existing conditions, pardon my sharing out. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, so yeah, we are requesting a zone change for parcel one, lot 38 at 899 through 925 Shaker Road in Long Meadow, um, to be changed from residential A1 zone to the business zone. And I will be zooming in on the parcel one, lot, uh, 38 here. So, in terms of this request, the building foundation, um, is currently non-conforming at the former Armada's loading dock. Um, it is in compliance with the town zoning bylaws, which allows for the building to be rebuilt and continued use of a non-conforming structure since it was destroyed by the fire in November of 2021. So, we are making a proactive effort, uh, to address this non-conformity that's happening here at the Armada's loading dock, uh, sitting at the northwest property line that does not meet the required setback of 15 feet. And, uh, once the zone change is approved, I think the combination of both these laws, both the business zone and this parcel one will correct this non-conformity.
All right, thank you Diana. Um, if I, just have a clarification for, or maybe Mark, you know, the answer. All we're doing is recommending or sending, forwarding this to the planning board for hearing, correct?
No, that's gonna be a meeting, right?
Well, the planning board has hearing first, right?
So you have to accept it, yes, and then.
We have to accept it and we have to have a, it has to be a legitimate request or is there a certain language we need to use? I just did one of these things in Long Meadow, I, I don't remember the term, if there is a term that we need to say.
Um, I, I'm not familiar with you needing to have, to say a term, but I can look back at what we did for the Coal Vest one.
Yeah, which is, it, it, I think the issue.
Oh, legitimate.
It, it, you know, we, we did consider this for also the Long Meadow shops, the same, the same thing, yeah, and the Young Mansion, also a zone change, is the same approach. I, I guess, I, I just have a quick question, maybe Diane, and that is, you know, the way you've described it just now and I, you know, is that, the issue is that the, the loading dock is, it encroaches on the 15-foot buffer zone, so why? So why would you not go to the zoning board of appeals and request a waiver of that 15-foot buffer and be done with it? And not take the risk of going before a town meeting that has been reluctant to change businesses, residential into business zones? Why are we looking to rezone the entire parcel when all we need is a waiver on the 15-foot buffer?
Is that a hardship? Well, they don't need the waiver, because they can, well, no, it's proactive, so they don't need to get the waiver regardless, because they can go in on the same footprint.
So then I, Josh, then I guess I'm not understanding what this whole thing is.
So, well, my understanding is if they, if this, Diana, correct me if I'm wrong, if this doesn't go through, nothing will change. You'll just, you'll own a lot that's residential next to your current business, the current building.
That's correct, yes.
So they are correcting a nonconformity, so if that becomes residential, they can put the lot together, and then there's no side setback issue, and, but they don't need this. So, and you could not, you couldn't show, you couldn't get a waiver under this because you need to show hardship, and there's no hardship because they can still get the building burned.
I guess I'm really not following that at all, Josh, and I apologize.
They just, they don't need it.
Right, so they're asking for something, I mean, the history in the town of Long Meadow is that requests to convert from residential to business have come back to bite the residents and the butters, you know, when, once it's business, we can expand the parking lot there, for example. Once it's rezoned, we can't, we can't control what goes in there as a business, as long as it's, then in conformance with a business, the business zone, okay? And so that's the opposition that's going to be, going to be, you know, met with the zoning change, and if you don't need the zoning change, it's nice to be proactive, but you're better off accomplishing what you need to accomplish without a zoning change, because people are going to say there must be an ulterior motive to requesting the zoning change.
Well, right, and I don't know if it's in our purview to ask that now, or if it's even in our purview. I don't think we can say, I don't know if we can not send this over to the planning board.
You can't.
So that's all we're doing today. So even if we ask that question, I, Walter, please stop talking from the other end, thank you.
Also, I think that, again, the town, I would imagine just about everyone in town thinks that this is a business zone. They would be surprised to find out it's a residential.
I'll bet you the butter knows it's residential.
It's a vacant lot.
It's been a business, it's been a business for all the time I've been in town, and 20 years before that.
We're not talking about where Armada's is, it's next, it's a vacant lot next to the parking lot.
Right, but it's all in that same area, and I think that, you know, maybe the town would support this change now, maybe in the past they wouldn't have, but, you know.
Well, yeah, so we're going, we're sending it over to the planning board for public hearing.
If the planning board is going to amend it.
You don't need to speak, okay?
We'll talk with you.
Great. So if we will have a motion to refer this zone change request to the planning board for public hearing and comment, entertain that motion.
I'll move that motion.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on this? All right, all those in favor? All right, thank you, Diana. So you will hear from the planning board on this.
Thank you very much. Thank you for hearing yourself.
Have a good night, thank you.
You too, thank you.
All right, moving on to one-day liquor license application for St. Mary's Parent Association for 56 Hopkins Place, and the event date is January 21st, 2023.
I'll move that we approve the one-day liquor license for St. Mary's Parent Association for January 21st, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And then we have the MMA Annual Business Meeting Voting Procedures. Do we have, do we need to take any action on this, or is this just informational?
You do. Generally, the chair is who would be voting for the town of Long Meadow, but I don't believe you're attending, Josh, right?
Right, we already designated.
That was for my, it's a different organization. And this, this information came just last week, so you, we do need to have someone else designated to vote on behalf of the town.
Move to designate Mark Gold?
Second.
That means I got to wake up early to go. These are at eight o'clock.
I don't want to get up.
That's fine.
All right, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thanks, Mark.
Speaking of, so the event, I did see that Tyler Technologies will be present for Munis, so we could, good opportunity to talk to him. Good luck. I'll be, I'll be next.
I'm sure they'd love to hear from Long Meadow. All right, we are next setting the preliminary special town election warrant.
I'll move that we set the preliminary special, we adopt this preliminary special town election warrant as proposed by the town clerk for special town meeting, preliminary election on February 7th, 2023.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hey, Mark, you said town meeting, somewhere in there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant special town election. Preliminary special town election.
So as amended, all those, if we're amending that, all those in favor? Okay. And we, Mike, are we signing this tonight?
Oh, yes.
Okay. And finally, setting the annual town election date and location.
Yeah, so this is similar to what we had to do last meeting for the annual town meeting. It has to be set by February 1st every year, and the proposed date is June 13th at the Long Meadow Community House.
Isn't, on the select board, isn't that, that's not Steve's resignation, right? Isn't that, well, it's not created by him, that term expired anyway.
Right, the term expired. So the people being elected in February and in March have to run for, whoever's elected has to run for reelection in June.
No, I know, I'm just, the vacancy created by the resignation of Steve Rantz, it's not a vacancy, it was running anyway. It doesn't matter that he resigned.
It could say vacancy that expires after the special town election.
Okay, I just to be clear.
Right.
Okay.
This is just kind of like an internal memo document, this is, this doesn't really go.
Oh, because, all right, and then I see you wrote special election after. Okay, I follow you now.
So I'll move we set this, the annual town election for June 13th, 2023.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
I just had a quick question. So how many, so how many meetings will the newly-elected select board member attend before the town meeting? I'm sorry, the town election on June 13th?
I think it's five, yeah.
Five, five meetings?
Five regular meetings.
There'd be four if it's.
Four? No, one in March, two in April, two in May.
And then the first one in June.
Maybe the first one in June.
And then if you have, generally you set up special meetings in March for budget hearings, but we haven't talked about that yet.
Wow.
And so, Lynn, we get a yearly stipend as select board member, do they get that pro-rated?
They will, yeah.
Or they get, yeah, okay.
And even more if they win the cover of the special town.
Now, see how we've been doing the extra work of that person? Shouldn't we get to split that extra?
Bring it up on the floor of town meeting. All right, so wait, I'm sorry, do we need to take action on this? Need to vote on the date?
Yeah, there's a motion.
Oh, there is?
There's a motion, and I think we second it.
Okay, I was off in my own world. Oh, yeah, I even asked for anything further. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, great, and anything on correspondence? Okay, all right. Anyone like to move to adjourn?
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Any further, all those in favor? All right, thank you, good night, everyone.
Good night.